I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Falls Church on Monday, December 9th, 2013. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. If I can please have the roll call.
Mr. Kalin?
Here.
Mr. Pepe? Mr. Pepe is absent. Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Charter?
Here.
Mayor Bruck?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. If I can have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as revised on 12/6/13?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda as revised.
Thank you. If I can have a second?
Second.
That's Mr. Kalin on the second. And Council members, we are going to have one item on other business not on the agenda. We can talk about that when we get to it. All in favor of adopting the meeting agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the meeting agenda is adopted. We have several proclamations to honor some of our distinguished members of our community tonight. And as I've told many of you before, saying goodbye or meeting people in a different context from which they have served our community for a number of years is always a difficult thing to do, certainly with all the individuals that we're going to honor in our community tonight. So it's my honor and privilege, but it does come with heartfelt sadness that we'll be bidding farewell to some of our members of our community, at least in their current capacities, as they move on to other things, but still hopefully will remain very active in the life of Falls Church, and I'm sure they will. So the first dedication I'd like to make is to Mary Margaret Whipple, who served the 31st District of the Virginia General Assembly in the Senate from 1996 to 2012. And the plaque is going to read, "As the City of Falls Church's representative in the General Assembly, you advocated for the values of the community by sponsoring charter amendments to improve the function of the city government, supporting transportation, the arts, water quality, public education. You have demonstrated your commitment to the City of Falls Church, its citizens, and its businesses. Thank you for your lasting contribution to the City of Falls Church." So, Mary Margaret, if you'd join us? Thank you. Thank you.
Picture?
Go on, the council photo.
Of course. Too late for you guys. I'm running.
And I want to --
That was quick.
I think we need one more.
No, don't.
I want to make it easy on you, Gary, so I came to the --
Okay. You're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And what I'm going to propose that we do is have comments when we get through all the accolades and plaques. The second plaque that I'd like to offer on behalf of the Council, on behalf of the city, is to James M. Scott from the 53rd District, House of Delegates of Virginia General Assembly, for a service between 1992 and 2013. As the City of Falls Church's representative in the General Assembly, you have advocated for the values of community by sponsoring charter amendments to improve the functions of the city government, supporting transportation, the arts, affordable housing, public education. You've demonstrated your commitment to the City of Falls Church, its citizens, and its businesses. Thank you for your lasting contribution to the City of Falls Church. Thank you, Jim.
I wanted to say thank you very much to the City Council and to the members of the City of Falls -- citizens of the City of Falls Church. It's been a special thrill for me to work with the citizens of this community and with this council. Mr. Snyder and I have worked together on the Council of Governments. Several of you and I have worked in other arenas. It's been a special thrill for me as a native Virginian, having born in a little place in southwest Virginia called Galax. And those of you who care a little bit about bluegrass have undoubtedly been to Galax. And I happen to be one of those fans. But mostly, I'm thrilled to be a part of your community. This is one of the greatest pleasures of my legislative career is to find when I first was elected to be a member of the General Assembly, including the City of Falls Church. So thank you all individually very, very much.
Thank you for your service. I'd like to open it up for any council members who wish to make any comments, or Mary Margaret as well. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks much. It's a particular opportunity to be able to say a few things about the long service of both Mary Margaret and Jim. There are a couple of things that I want to emphasize. The first is that when you needed someone at the other end of the line in Richmond, they were always there. And we know that we're a Dillon role state, like it or not, and what the General Assembly does or doesn't do has an inordinate amount of control over what we do here. And we always knew that we had representatives in Richmond who were there, willing and able to assist us in whatever our priorities were. So I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank both Mary Margaret and Jim for the work that they've done regionally in a whole host of areas: transportation, housing, education. It's been a real pleasure and opportunity to serve with them in those capacities as well. Finally, at the end of the day, it isn't just the way they did things, but what they did and the ends for which they served the public. And I believe there were no higher ends than the ends for which they served the public over their distinguished careers. So I wanted to personally thank both Mary Margaret and Jim for your service, on behalf of the citizens, but even in a broader sense, on behalf of the people of Virginia and America. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? I'd like to echo the sentiment of Vice Mayor Snyder and his thanks to both of our representatives. I know it's been not always an easy place to serve up in Richmond, but you've both represented the city extremely well. And we thank you for your service in representing the interests of Falls Church and its citizens. And just on a personal note, Jim, I don't think I've shared this story with you, but a good friend of mine from law school who also served in the General Assembly with you, once I was on the council, said, "You've got to get to know Jim. He's an outstanding individual and will represent Falls Church aimlessly." And, you know, getting to know you and getting to know your leadership in Richmond, that was wise counsel that I got. And I just wanted to pass that along. I don't think I had the opportunity to share that with you, but it all was true, and it's been a pleasure working with you and look forward to working with you in future capacities as well. So thank you very much for both of your services to the City of Falls Church and to Virginia. The next item on the agenda is the oath of office to newly elected city council members. And I'm going to ask that Margaret Shovlin and Renee Andrews from the Electoral Board join us. I think they're going to be presenting the actual certificates. And our city clerk, Kathy Bishow, is going to be doing the swearing-in. So I'm going to pass the baton to Kathy, who's going to handle the swearing-in, and to our Electoral Board of Representatives.
Could please have any council members come forward, stand down here, including Mr. Snyder?
Who I might say anecdotally got left off the original version of this agenda.
It didn't even seem like he needed to be sworn in again. Renee, would you like to go ahead and make this presentation, then I'll swear everyone in? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now? Ready? I'm going to swear everybody in. If you all would turn and face me, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. When I pause, it'll be a space to put your name in. Are you ready? Aye, and your name.
Aye, Karen Malconley.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
And that I will faithfully and impartially?
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me?
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the City Council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia?
As a member of the City Council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Very good. Thank you. And if you're happy, you can leave. You can each sign one of these. The pretty one is for your scrapbook, and the other one is for my file. Thank you. You get to keep the fancy one for your scrapbook. For your grandchildren.
Congratulations to all of our newly elected council members. I'm sure that we're all looking forward to working with them starting January 1st, when they are first seated. So look forward to serving with them on the council as they come up. I'd like to take this opportunity also to present to the outgoing -- yeah. I'd like to present to our outgoing members of council plaques as well. So, wow. Hopefully, I can make it through this. In gratitude for your dedication to public service, Johanna Berry, council member, July 20th, 2010 through December 2013, council committees, appointments committee, government operations administration and evaluation committee, budget and finance committee, boards and commission liaison appointments, environmental services council, library board of trustees, public utilities commission, and the tree commission, regional memberships, Northern Virginia Workforce Investment Board, COG Chesapeake Bay Policy Committee, COG Climate and Energy Committee, COG Human Services Policy Committee, serving as the alternate, COG Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Committee, and the Potomac Watershed Roundtable. So Ms. Berry's been a little busy serving the citizens of Falls Church in the last four years. And again, once we get through all the plaques, I'm going to open it up for any comments that any members have. For Mr. Kalin, in gratitude for your dedication to public service, Ira Kalin, council member, July 2010 through December 2013, council committees, city council school board liaison group, economic development committee, budget committee -- that should be budget and finance committee, boards and commission liaison, architectural advisory board, human services advisory council, planning commission, senior citizens commission, regional membership, Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, alternate, COG Metropolitan Air Quality Committee, alternate, Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, alternate, Northern Virginia Workforce Investment Board, serving as the alternate. So those are the plaques and the credit task force. That's right, which we'll get to tonight. And that's the stormwater credit task force. And the final plaque that I have, Ron Pepe is on work travel, but we'll make sure he gets the plaque. In gratitude for your dedication to public service, Ron Pepe, council member, July 2010 through December 2013, council committees, city council, school board liaison group, economic development committee, budget committee -- that should be budget and finance committee, boards and commission liaison appointments, economic development authority, public utilities, commission for the retirement board, regional memberships, COG Metropolitan Development Policy Committee, COG Region Forward, COG Transportation Planning Board as the alternate. So those are the plaques and the credit task force. That's right, which we'll get to tonight. And that's the stormwater credit task force. And the final plaque that I have, Ron Pepe is on work travel, but we'll make sure he gets the plaque. In gratitude for your dedication to public service, Ron Pepe, council member, July 2010 through December 2013, council committees, city council school board liaison group, government ops administration and evaluations committee, boards and commission liaison, architectural advisory board, human services advisory council, planning commission, senior citizens commission, regional membership, Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, alternate, COG Metropolitan Air Quality Committee, alternate, Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, alternate, Northern Virginia Workforce Investment Board, serving as the alternate. So I just wanted to thank all of our outgoing for the services that they provided, and I'm sure that I'll have more to say after the other council members make any comments they have.
Thank you. And it's got an H at the end. Mr. Bennett? H.
All right. I want to open it up to any council members who wish to make any comments at this point. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to lead off. It's been said that there are three ways to leave office, and two of them aren't too pleasant. The third one, which is to finish your term on a high note, which is exactly what these three council members are doing. In fact, one could say that today the city is in as financially strong a position as it's been in the last, maybe since its creation. And there was a lot of hard work that went into that, whether it was the water system litigation or the encouragement of new development. But I think all three members that are moving on should be very, very proud of the results of what they've achieved. Joanna has brought incredible expertise in the environmental field and in management to bear, as can be indicated by her many committee and local committee and regional assignments. Ira has brought to the mix of views of very considerable expertise in financial management and financial issues. And his stewardship of the city's resources through the Economic Development Committee are second to none. So my congratulations to the both of you for a job well done. Ron has a very distinguished career in public service, not only in Virginia but in Maryland. And as a former chair of the school board and as a -- he's retiring now as a member of city council, his contributions to this community and other communities are very, very significant. And so Ron as well contributed a great deal to the success that I think this council can be rightly very proud of. So my heartfelt thanks to all three members, Joanna and Ira, since you're here especially. My congratulations to you for a job well done. Thanks.
Other council members? You get to go last, Mr. Kalin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I already spoke my piece about Mr. Pepe at work session in the night when he was there, but I just want to second those remarks that Vice Mayor Snyder made. Mr. Pepe's level head and the common sense and no-nonsense manner has been a tremendous asset to the school board before council and to the council as well. And it's been a great privilege to serve with him, and I definitely hope he will maintain a level of activity in city affairs. He's a young man and has much left to offer our city. About Joanna, I would just like to say three things. I've had the privilege of serving as the junior member of the appointments committee during her tenure as chair of that group, and I've been just very impressed, month after month, with the level of attention and commitment that she brings to that task. I don't think we ever missed a meeting, you know? We scheduled interviews at 15-minute intervals with citizens who were interested in serving, and it was like a speed date session every month. But it was -- we always ran over, and it wasn't always my fault, because people had a lot to say, a lot to offer. And I just think she ran the meetings terrifically, and it was really an inspiration every month to see the caliber of people who want to come forward and volunteer for our city. And she was very nurturing of that and encouraging of that, and I thank her for all the work. You don't get a lot of headlines on the appointments committee, but it's very vital work to keep replenishing our boards and commissions. Can't let her leave without referring to the PED Plan, which is now called for all of you. Please follow after me. Mobility for All Modes, which is an excellent name. It implies that we will walk, we will bicycle, we will, I don't know, hot air balloons. I don't know what we'll do in the future, but we are definitely going to do something in the future that involves not just hopping in our internal combustion vehicles to get everywhere we need to go. And when we get to that stage where we walk more, and we bike more, and we teleport more, whatever we do, Joanna will be able to look back and know that she had a lot to do with turning the page and opening our eyes to new opportunities in that area. And finally, I'd just like to say that having somebody who's in the nonprofit sector, as I am, on council has been heartening and an inspiration, too, because I think folks who work in the nonprofit sector, they look at budgets and they look at -- they just look at things a little differently. We live a little closer to the bone in the nonprofit land, and I've appreciated her perspective in numerous discussions, and I'll miss that. But I know she will continue to be active, and thank you for all of your work. And that leads me to Mr. Kalin. I've thought so many times, and I couldn't sleep at night, what I would say on my last meeting with Mr. Kalin. And yet, here we are, and I hardly know where to start. So I won't go along, because I know that's the most important thing that will make him happy. I just want to assure you all that we will keep this show somehow on the road after he retires from the council. In some form, I know that he will continue to be active, and I certainly, and I mean this in all sincerity, hope that we will be able to benefit from his expertise and his just sheer commitment to the city, to do the work. You know, a lot of folks come here, you know, they work hard, do some things in the community when they retire, you know, they get involved in other things, which is fine. But Mr. Kalin has really poured a lot of energy into this community, working on things that, you know, are going to benefit us years, decades down the line. And that is the very definition of a public servant, I think. And I would like to thank him personally and particularly for his work in the economic development area. He and I have generally been allied in that area, and I think we've done just terrifically great things for the city in the time that he has been chair. And I hope that all of you all will agree, once we get all these buildings built, it's going to be kind of a mess for a few years. But I really think that we've done some good things for the city, and a lot of that lays right at the doorstep of Mr. Kalin. So thank you very much.
Other council members?
Thank you. Although we've mixed it up pretty well at times, I think we've accomplished a great deal. I would definitely echo what my predecessors have just said. I think it's been an unduly productive term. I think you alluded a little bit to this, Phil, but in the past year alone, we've got three new grocery stores starting here in the city. Good Fortune at Eden Center, Harris Teeter, and Fresh Market. I mean, we're pretty much doubling the amount of grocery stores in our city in the past year. It's just, I think it's remarkable. And I think so this is the start of a transformation of our downtown in a very positive and good way. The water sale, again, a huge accomplishment. The departing council members had a huge role in that. This additional land that's been brought into the city can also be transformative in a lot of ways for our schools, for economic development. And I know departing members, Ira in particular, but also Joanna and Ron, all had a big part in having the outcome that we did, which is very successful, I think, for the city. Even many of the smaller things that we've done in the past years, even just the recent bus stops in the city, the widening of our streetscape, so many little things that have been accomplished in this past year, 18 months. And so I would just like to, again, to thank you. It's been a privilege to serve with each and every one of you, and I wish you all the best of luck. But thank you for your service.
So I wanted to echo some of the comments that have been made by other council members, but I think a comment that we made for our outgoing city attorney, who we bid farewell to last week, is very poignant of what public servants throughout the country should really strive for, and that's leaving whatever position we take in public service, leaving the community a better place than when we started. Certainly, I think the three members of council that we're bidding farewell to for now certainly bring that to light. You know, I think when the council first started, we were facing some very, very difficult financial times. And certainly through the leadership of the three members, Ron Pepe, and certainly Johanna Berry, and Mr. Ira Kalin, who served on the financial and budget committees, really helped put into place or proposed budget policies that really helped us get on the right footing. And it wasn't always easy for the whole council to sort of coalesce on various budget policies and guidance or budgets, but at the end of the day, we got there through lots of discussion and at times very colorful. And some of the folks kept me pretty busy and on my toes trying to lead these meetings, and I'll certainly miss that.
No, you will.
I know I will. I will. So I think they are certainly leaving the city in a much better financial place than they first found it in, and it was because of their leadership. Two, I just wanted to comment on the leadership that Ms. Berry has shown. And I remember one of our first sort of interactions was, we were trying to organize ourselves, and we needed volunteers for the various boards and commission liaisons, regional issues. And I had sort of been through it once before, so I sort of knew what to get myself into and what not to. And shall I say, Ms. Berry didn't, and I didn't counsel her otherwise, so she just volunteered for everything. So, and, you know, the rest of the council members, some who had been around for a while, and maybe the new council member shouldn't be paying attention to what I'm saying next. She pretty much volunteered for just about everything and really stepped up, even though she was a freshman council member, if you will, and really led in her regional efforts on a variety of issues, but most significantly on some of the environmental issues. And certainly, her expertise of managing nonprofits certainly played a huge part in what I discussed earlier. To Ron Pepe, who, I mentioned this the other night, but I think it's worth mentioning again, Ron, and again, without getting too far afield of what was discussed in closed session over the water transactions, really brought a very crisp, sharp mind to the discussion on matters. So I will forever be in gratitude to Ron for his efforts for the water deal as well. And to Mr. Kalin, what can I say? It's been, you know, we were friends before you came on to council, and I'm sure will remain friends as well as Mr. Pepe and Ms. Berry, but you've always kept me on my toes in the seat, and I'm sure -- in this seat, and I'm sure you're going to keep all of us on our toes as well. But it's been, it's been a privilege and an honor serving with you on this council. And as I mentioned earlier, it was really through a lot of the discussions that you brought to bear that I think the city is in a much better financial situation than we were several years ago. So I thank you for that on behalf of the council, but also on behalf of the citizens of Falls Church. I think that we're just in a much, much better place, you know, and I just reflect back to, you know, comments that I had made to the news press in my annual State of the City where I was cautiously optimistic, and I think the last go-around, I was optimistic. So, which is a lot coming from me. And I think that's in large part for the various leadership roles and positions taken by the three outgoing members. So I thank all three of them for really putting the city in a much better state than we were four years ago. So thank you very much.
Want to open it up for any comments our outgoing members may have. Ms. Berry?
Well, my comments are going to be brief, and first of all, thank you all for your extraordinarily kind words. It's, I didn't know how I was going to organize my thoughts, so I put them on a piece of paper. It's been an honor to serve as a member of the Falls Church City Council, and I thank this council and my colleagues on past council for their wisdom and guidance. I think our collective work has put the city on firm financial footing with new and exciting developments coming online, the sale of the water system approved, and city and school services continuing to provide exceptional benefit to our citizens. I would like to thank staff for their almost preternatural patience with us. It cannot have been easy. Don't have to say anything. You don't even have to make eye contact. I know, I know, we've been, we've been seven egos and then some. I would like to thank the citizens who have supported our work, who continue to be engaged and involved in Falls Church governance, the members of our boards and commissions, and the countless volunteers and civic-minded folk who moved this exceptional city forward. Thank you again.
Mr. Cail?
I won't be quite as brief as, this is an opportunity to summarize three and a half years of experience. And by the way, before I start, I would like to thank everybody for their very generous comments, and especially you, Phil, for your gracious expressions, considering I've been giving you a royal hard time recently. But that's appreciated. Bear with me, I'd like to go, some repetition over what we have accomplished, but I also would like to take this opportunity, as this is our last meeting for some of us, to go over one key issue that I think will be a challenge for the new council, and I'd like to spend a few minutes to discuss that. This is perhaps not exactly what is done in past councils, but I'd like to take this opportunity, because it's a rare forum for this to take place. The past three and one-half years as a council member of the Falls Church City Council has been an experience that is difficult to encapsulate in a few words, but here goes. The nature of a council. Unlike our larger neighbors, Falls Church provides individuals with energy and commitment and opportunity for civic involvement that is unusually in highly urbanized areas, where working your way up the political ladder involves years of paying your dues. As such, the nature and character of the council can change rapidly, reflecting the availability of candidates, specific backgrounds, expertise, and most importantly, the mood of the electorate at that election time. The final ingredient in determining the character and achievements of any council are in the end dependent on the types of challenges and issues that have to be addressed, the true crucible of character and capability. Let me spend a little time on the, what I think we've accomplished from my vantage point. In the continuum of issues facing the city council classes 2010 to 2014, there were a number, there were a number that came to head during our tenure. My view, the accomplishments that I'm going to list below do not reflect all that was achieved. I am sure that other city council members will have their own list. In my view, these are the accomplishments. As have been mentioned by others, dealing with the immediate financial stress resulting from the loss of a water system revenues, the general economic downturn and flattened real estate taxes, and frankly, questionable fiscal practices caused in part by inflated real estate values and the inability to design, implement, and long-term financial objectives. The city buckled down, drew a deep breath, and implemented necessary fiscal policies that have led us to our current AAA rating. Johanna and I, as members of the city council, budget and finance, don't mind me speaking for you, were pleased to have an opportunity to participate in the strengthening of the city's financial structure. The other one, another one is deciding to sell the water system, a system that precedes the establishment of Falls Church as a city and had become an integral part of the city's history. The sale was for many individuals, a further loss of their personal history. In many ways, the sale of the water system represents the loss of a symbol of Falls Church autonomy and character. The decision to sell the water system was not taken lightly. Personally, I've participated in multi-billion dollar capital transactions in my career, but the water sale was in some ways the most difficult and tactically sensitive in which I have involved. With the court decision to prevent any revenues from the water system to be transferred to our general fund, the system became a liability to the citizens rather than an asset overnight. The final chapter of the story was effectively written through federal mediation under the auspices of magistrate Teresa Buchanan. The meeting was the culmination of years of hard work by the legal team, the city management, and the city council. I believe city council decisions have proven to be correct, that having been said, decisions were reached after intense closed-session meetings. Establishing a stormwater enterprise fund. The impetus for the creation of the stormwater enterprise fund was generated by the implementation of the EPA regulations aimed at reducing Chesapeake Bay water pollution. These regulations included significant fines for non-compliance. The city response went beyond avoiding fines, rather, it was proactive, fair, and in my view, effective in addressing a longstanding nagging problem, inadequate, among other things, stormwater management. Without the enterprise fund, flooded streets and basements would have been a permanent feature of Falls Church. Approval of the Harris Teeter and Reserve at Tenner Hill project, which had been mentioned before. I was the chairperson of the city's EDC when these projects were formally presented to the city. Some individuals strongly disagreed and continued to disagree with their approval. Among the major concerns expressed was the increase in public service costs associated with mixed-use development. That having been said, I believe that these two projects are transformational in nature and anchored by strong commercial activity. And now for some of the issues I see going forward. As I look back over the past three and a half years, I believe that the city's development paradigm needs to be revisited. Bridging the gap between revenues and expenditures is economic development the answer. When Johanna and I campaigned for city council in 2010, we both actively and passionately believed that the already identified structural imbalance between revenues and expenditures could be significantly reduced through enhanced economic development. To put it another way, the city's real estate tax, with the right type of development, could be stabilized at reasonable levels. That belief had already been ongoing for many years, but had been implemented sporadically with varying degrees of success. Under the relenting, unrelenting pressure on tax rates, development moved from an essential component of the city's future to another level, its salvation. However, salvations are belief systems and not based on analysis. With the data available in 2010, I believe that in fact the city's financial salvation could be achieved, building on our lessons learned from prior projects and by actively seeking business and development interest. School enrollment and economic development, a new paradigm required. The salvation theory has been shattered by increased school enrollment, associated increases in operating costs measured in double-digit transfer increases, the announcement in, I think it was 2011, that a new high school preliminary estimated to cost $100 million was going to be requested. When these costs are factored into the city's budget, the budget shortfall is so large that it cannot be bridged through current levels of development. The best that can be hoped for is a marginal slowing down of the growth of the shortfall. There is hope that we can recapture sustainability by the efficient use of the newly acquired land at GMHS. However, that development is many years away, and the crunch point is already upon us. Looking forward, obstacles cannot be overcome and problems cannot be solved if they're not recognized. The feel-good claims that economic development, at least in the ten years, will materially slow the increase in taxes is not, simply not accurate. We do not have available develop a land that can be transferred into meaningful revenue generating, excuse me, meaningful generating sites within that time period. Should we continue to promote and advocate for economic development? Of course. We should continue to develop and implement area plans. They are part of the long-term survivability of the city. It is said, if you are not moving forward, you are moving backward. A new factor that accelerates the need for a paradigm shift occurred when school board member stated that a fifth school will be needed to accommodate expected enrollment increases. Specifically, I believe that calculating the net fiscal impact of new mixed projects, that is apartments with retail commercial activities, needs to include a tipping point calculation, that is, the net fiscal impact taking into account the cost of building a new school. New apartments are not likely to be the primary driver for the need for a new school, but they will accelerate the time we reach the tipping point. That having been said, it is not at all obvious where a fifth school could be built or how the city would absorb an additional $30 to $40 million expenditure. Finally, tax increases. No one's ever accused me of avoiding the big issues. Citizen views on tax rate increases range from zero to no limit. I believe one commenter captured the issue perfectly. Many citizens would be willing to bear some increase in taxes if the needs of those citizens without children in schools were actively taken into account. This issue goes far beyond a revenue-sharing regime. Perhaps the greatest challenge facing the new council will be finding the path to fairness. That path may well determine whether the city survives as a coherent community, or if it dissolves into factions and segments. That is my parting shot and view for the new council to consider. And a complete change of topics, something more, much more upbeat. I understand that, while it's in the process of being finalized, we will have the Kaiser Permanent Day Parking available for New Year's Eve, and that is certainly a tangible of this city council. Thank you very much, and appreciate your patience in listening to my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cailin. And I believe that Mr. Wyatt Shields, our city manager, wanted to take some parting shots, so, Mr. Shields?
Parting shots?
Well, I will say, in our form of government, the council always gets the last word, but...
I figured, since Mr. Shields gets to see council members come and go, that it might be apropos to have Mr. Shields close this topic up.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and on behalf of all city staff, I do want to thank the council. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve this council. I would just note personally that I've had the pleasure of working for elected officials in one form or the other, federal, state, or at local level, for 22 years. And this council, I think, is unique in my experience in how they have challenged all of us to, with an unrelenting focus on the long term, and not necessarily to take the easy route of today, but to have a focus on hard decisions for the long term. And I've learned a great deal from working with this council, and I hope that these, that all of those council members who are stepping down look back on your service on the governing board of this city with satisfaction and pleasure on the accomplishments of the past four years. And so I just want to note that, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we're going to turn back to our business agenda, and I just wanted to just note that, for the members of the public, that Mr. Pat Taves, who is acting city attorney for us, is here with us this evening, and he'll be serving in the council and the community as the city attorney in the interim.
Mr. Mayor, before the folks leave, I think we thanked about everybody tonight appropriately, but we haven't thanked the families of the past, present, and future public officials. And running for office is, it's been said, I think the League of Women Voters has a great phrase, that democracy is not a spectator sport, and holding public office in virtually every case is a family affair. So I want to thank all the families of the public officials that have been recognized tonight, and both, as I said, past, present, and future. And I think the citizens were thanked, and after all, in our city, the distinction between public and official and citizen is nonexistent, as it appropriately should be. So our thanks go to all of our citizens who are as much a part of our efforts as any of us here, and any of those who have been recognized tonight. Thank you.
Kathy, do we have anybody to be sworn in? Dean Chuck, thank you very much for your service.
We are on to receipt of public comments, requests, and consent items. I've got several speaker slips. The first item that I have, not on the agenda, is regarding the West End from Ms. Kathy Kleiman. Ms. Kleiman? If you'd please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Kathy Kleiman. I live at 203 Grove Avenue. Before I start my formal comments, I'd like to thank the outgoing members of city council for all your time, effort, and thank you. And welcome the new coming, incoming members of city council. Thank you so much. I'm here to talk about West End Park, as I did so often about 13 years ago. There's a lot of sawing, there's a lot of changes going on at West End Park, and a lot of them aren't well-known to the neighbors. The plans are pre-recession, pre, a lot of, when a lot of neighbors have moved in. And they will have an impact on the fauna and on the wildlife in the park. And I was coming to complain, but I understand that my complaints have already been heard, and that we're going to have a meeting with the neighbors as we go into the West End Park development. And I think that's very important. These are old master plans, they are pre-recession, and they may need to be revisited a bit to tweak them for what's best for the park. So let me go on to a second issue, which is a bigger-picture issue. So, let me go on to a second issue, which is a bigger-picture issue. And that is, I want to put you in a place in the city. So, I want to put you at Grove and West End. And for the purpose of this discussion, you will not be hit by any speeding traffic or any speeding bicyclists. So, look, think about it, look at 7-Eleven and Lazy Sunday, and think about what's about to happen in a quarter-mile area right there. In front of you, where 7-Eleven and Lazy Sunday is, is a planned, is a proposed, to-be-proposed four-acre development. To your left, West End, West Street is going to have sidewalks and changes, and changes to parking, so we've got that under development. There's some plans for gateways, a city gateway, to welcome people in that also has to somehow fit into this small area. And then, of course, we've got a small two-acre park, which is under an old master plan. That's a lot happening on all sides of you when you stand at Grove and West. And what I don't see happening is kind of a big picture or a small-area plan on this. Are we taking into account, you know, are we thinking about the priorities for this area? Are we thinking about what the neighborhood needs, about what the city needs? Are we reevaluating master plans in light of current development? In light of this city gateway concept, I'm looking at Mr. Snyder, because he's talked to me about it, and it's an interesting idea. But are we gonna, are we going to hurt some things by going forward with certain plans without taking the big picture, the holistic approach in? And so I'd like to call for a small-area plan in West End before we make too many major changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Then I have several speaker slips on, on items that are on the agenda. I'm happy to take those comments when we get to those items or now, if people prefer. Okay. So, we'll just take those comments when they, when we get to that, to those topics. Kathy, if you would go ahead and summarize the, oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward. If you have a speaker slip or don't have one, feel free to come forward and address And if this is on Citizens United, given a possible potential conflict that I may have, and Vice Mayor Snyder may have one, I'm going to pass the gavel to Ms. Berry. So, Ms. Berry.
Hi, my name is Brian Siebel. I spoke a couple of weeks ago on this. I live at 602 Oak Haven Drive in Falls Church. I just want to thank the council again for taking up this issue and joining the thousands of communities across the country that are addressing this question. I spoke on this two weeks ago, but I want to raise two things that came up since then. One is that the Supreme Court has taken a couple of cases now that bring the issue of whether corporations can have religious rights to, you know, as well as other First Amendment rights. And there's a case in the 10th Circuit that's now up in the Supreme Court in which a corporation was allowed, using its idea of having religious rights, to essentially neuter some healthcare regulations. And, you know, so one wonders really how far this whole concept of corporations as people might go if we don't really put in, you know, bring it back into the realm where it began, which is the corporations are creatures of the state and should be allowed to be regulated by the people and by the states. The other issue, also in the last few days, the Securities and Exchange Commission was asked to adopt a resolution that would require corporations to reveal political expenditures to their shareholders, since it is, in fact, corporate money that's going and shareholder resources going to political expenditures. Well, there were more than 600,000 comments on this rule, the most ever on an SEC-proposed rule in the history of the SEC, and yet they've just decided to drop the matter. So, and again, even though the Supreme Court, when it came down with the Citizens United decision, thought there would be all this disclosure, in fact, there really is very little disclosure when it comes to what's being spent in this arena. But I just want to thank again the council for considering this issue and, again, joining with thousands of other communities across the country, states and municipalities and whatnot, and citizens who are really wanting to take our democracy back and for it to be the people who are foremost in that process and not, not money dominating the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siebel. Are there, I have two other speaker slips on this topic. Would you like to speak now or wait till this comes up? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilors. I'm Deborah Z. Roth. I'm speaking as a resident of Falls Church City, part of the Move to Amend group, owner of Roth Communicating, a small business, and chief of communications for wider opportunities for women in Washington, D.C. I'm proud to be a citizen of Falls Church City, and I decided to move here years ago, partly because of the spirit of the community and that our community consists of people who value their neighbors as more than residents in the house or apartment next door. I knew that by living here, I'd be able to share principles with my neighbors, principles that place community first and that blend the core of each individual, like the melting pot, that is, the United States of America, and that utilize businesses as tools, not as though they are legislative bodies, a standard that is changing due to the Citizens United case. When my Falls Church City fellow citizens and I want to change or strengthen a law or regulation, we come to you. And through the voice of our citizenry, the democratic process, the democratic ideal, together we decide the best course to take. The misguided Citizens United decision is changing that, and that is affecting even city and county governments deeply and egregiously. Corporations are not people. Now, however, they can contribute without bounds to political campaigns, for political advertising, and they are seeking to be treated like individuals and to be granted exemptions from law, using the power of business to influence the courts. All of these actions affect every individual in our city. It won't be long that we may see individuals running for city councils, for city council seats, using the dollars of a corporation pursuing changes to zoning and the tax structure that could destroy the community as we know it. I respect the concern that some have that Move to Amend may sound anti-business. It is not. In fact, many of its members are business owners. This step, this resolution, that would go toward a constitutional amendment to overturn Citizens United, is a step back toward campaign finance reform. I respect that many wonder whether their professional positions could cause a conflict of interest when it comes to weighing in on this debate. A counselor is not a full-time job, though the responsibilities are 24/7. Many of us have worked with others who have analyzed the resolution in case. I understand that owners of corporations who don't even support Citizens United are not necessarily interested in devoting resources toward reversing the case and wonder if it might benefit them at some point. However, as individuals and members of our democracy, many understand that it is bad law that impacts them as individuals, as well as their employees, clients, and neighbors. A conflict of interest does not exist when it comes to what is best for those you represent. I thank you, those of you who have stood up vigorously for our democratic values, and that's what it takes to make them work. Thanks.
Thank you, Deborah. I have one other speaker slip. Do you want to speak now or do you want to, okay.
I spoke a couple of weeks ago on this topic, but not every council member was present at that time, so I'm going to be pretty much repeating my remarks.
May I have your name, please, and address?
My name is Julie Ite. I'm a resident of Falls Church City, and I'm one of the 45 residents who signed a petition asking the council to support a U.S. constitutional amendment to overturn the Supreme Court's Citizens United ruling. The Supreme Court ruled with Citizens United that corporations can be treated as people with respect to campaign financing and that money spent by corporations and other organizations is a form of free speech. This ruling is harming the ability of the electorate to select candidates who will represent we, the people, and it is hiding the names of the corporations that can sway those elected with large and unreported contributions. In today's elections, it is mainly the wealthy that can afford to run for office, higher office. Those that aren't are forced to continuously fundraise, taking valuable time away from serving the actual needs of Americans, the job they were elected to perform. With the Citizens United ruling, there are virtually unlimited and hidden funds available to any candidate who is willing to take them. And the reporting laws on contributions are such that we often don't know who has contributed to an election until after the election is over. What kind of pressure does this have on the winner's votes? Who will our representatives represent? Although Falls Church City holds nonpartisan elections, the impact of the Citizens United ruling is nonetheless felt by her citizens. This is not a partisan issue. We now can unwittingly elect a representative at the national level who's financed and beholden to entities who are surely expecting to influence votes. These votes affect all Americans, including those in Falls Church. As our local elected officials, we ask you to make a statement that you support the power of the people over money interests. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address the city council on any issues? Kathy, if you'd go ahead and read the summary of the written comments we've received.
Counsel, in your summary of written comments with regard to the water sale proceeds, Frederick Foss at 119 East Jefferson Street believes the council should use the proceeds from the sale of the water system to reduce property taxes in the city. Karen Sharp at 408 Southwest Street requested the council to consider other options for use of the water utility sale proceeds besides the pension fund. He has suggested investing in a high-quality preschool for an investment that would reduce the incidence of welfare and criminal behavior and boost earning capacity in the long run and perhaps support year-round schools. With regard to Citizens United resolution, I did receive at my office a voicemail message from a woman requesting the council to pass the Citizens United resolution, but her name was unclear, there was no address and no number given.
Great. Thank you very much. We are on to council member requests. Council members? Mr. Duncan?
Just one quick thing, thank you. Mr. Shields, I received a postcard, I'm sure all of us did, from Fairfax Water announcing a December 19th, I think it was, hearing of some sort regarding rates. I just wonder if, for the benefit of us and the community, you could just disseminate, make sure through our communication structure, you disseminate, you know, an explanation briefly of what that hearing is about and if it relates in any way to our glide path towards bringing the rates here down to the level that they are in Fairfax.
Well, the, what the Fairfax Water intends to do is to continue the current rate structure for the coming year and, over the course of this year, work through what the, what their ultimate intent is within two years to join the city rate so it is locked in at the same rate as all of the customers throughout Fairfax County. But the notice that everyone has received is a notice that the rates will remain flat, unchanged by Fairfax Water effective next year.
Other council members?
Could I follow up on that? Just so I fully understand it, our rates are going to stay the same next year. What's the impediment to the rates dropping down? I know the agreement said two years, but have they articulated any reason why it couldn't happen less than two years?
Well, they're working through their financial modeling to make sure that there are not cross subsidies and that the, that they can implement a, a uniform rate across the system within two years, which is what their commitment is. They have explained that they can't do that immediately because their financial analysis right now, that that is something they financially cannot do. But they're working to make the adjustments so that they would be able to do so within two years.
Mr. Callen?
That's an accurate description of the water system, Fairfax Water Systems, I think. But it is what it is, that's the agreement. But this is a billion-dollar enterprise. It's got a thousand days of reserves. Hard to imagine that this was going to disrupt the financial well-being of Fairfax Water. Doesn't matter, that was the agreement, but I share your skepticism as to why, two years.
Other members of council? We're on to the reporter, the city manager of the council, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, and members of council. Just several things to report. First, I would like to introduce Mike Collins, who many of you all have met, as the city's new Public Works Director. He's in, oh, he's gone. There he is. You can stand up and, and I know everybody looks forward to meeting you and, and talking with you, but welcome to the city of Falls Church. Mike comes to us from Arlington County, where he was chief of the Engineering Bureau in the Department of Environmental Services and in charge of implementing their capital plan. And so, look forward to having him exercise his talents, knowledge, and experience here in the city. And I also want to thank Cindy Mester for tremendous service as our acting Public Works Director over the past several months, and she has done that on top of all of her normal assignments. So, thank you, Cindy. And speaking of Public Works, Public Works, of course, is at the front line of storm response, and I want to thank them for, our city employees for their response in treating the streets and our urban forestry crews and removing trees from the public right-of-way and from our parks. They will have a lot of work over the coming days, particularly in our parks. For the public, wherever you do see a tree down in the street that has power lines involved in it, please do stay away from that and understand that city crews will not remove that tree until Dominion has cleared it and ensured that it is safe for us to go in and do our work. We do currently have approximately 92 households in the city that are still out of power, and people should call Dominion directly to make sure that they still know you're out of power. If you are out of power, that is how they keep track, is through that customer response and through customer calls into their call center. Shifting gears, I want to announce publicly that for our public utility employees, we're having an event on Friday morning at 10:30 in the community center as an opportunity to recognize all of our employees, our 55 water utility employees and retirees for their service and accomplishments for the city and for our customers throughout the region. And I think that will be a special event, and all are invited to that. Our council chambers after this meeting, and we have, I think, one more court session, but after that, we will take the holidays to do a spruce-up in council chambers, and so there will be some deep cleaning going on, some carpet replacement, some painting, not a significant change, but a sprucing up and a brightening up. So, when you come back in the new year, hopefully you will see the change and, and be glad to have a little bit of a spruce-up. And then, lastly, for the public, our trash pickup is always on Wednesdays. Christmas and New Year's Day are on Wednesday this year, so for both of those holiday weeks, trash will be picked up on the following Saturday. Public notices going out, door hangers going out, so the word will get out on that, but just a heads up on that. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you very much.
Just one thing. Wyatt, my kids wanted me to ask, what's the status of the Transformers at the schools? I understand earlier today, three out of the four schools had Transformers blown. Could you maybe update us on how that stands?
Well, I think what he really wants to know is, is the school going to open tomorrow? That is the superintendent's call. But the schools did, for three of our four, four schools are out of power today due to surges throughout the system. I don't have the latest status of power restoration. I do know that Dominion has our schools as critical facilities, and so they will give them a priority to get them open, but I don't have their exact status for opening right now.
Any other questions, council members? Okay, we're on to business on the agenda. Ms. Schaff, if you'd read the first item, please.
Counsel, the first one in before you for second reading, T.O. 13-27, ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning. Article 5, supplementary regulations.
Article five, supplementary regulations, Division one, generally, to add Section 48-869, mobile food service.
Thank you.
And counsel, given the long agenda, this item is before council on second reading. And rather than provide a staff report, there's no changes between first reading and second reading. If we could just see if there are any questions from council on the ordinance, and we'd be happy to answer them. Actually, there is one change on the fee. And Nancy, if you could speak to that, and then we can take questions.
Right. On the question of the fees during the public comment period, it was suggested that the term "annual" be added for clarification. And so that's not a substantive change because it was clear from the information presented that it was an annual fee. So that's the one change that was made from first reading.
Thank you. Questions, council members?
Just to set forth on the record, the proposals that we're looking at with regard to mobile food service were worked out in combination with the existing business community. Is that right?
Yes. A study group was convened that included restaurateurs, the Chamber of Commerce, several city staff members. So yes, the business community was absolutely involved. And then asked for a public comment, too. So before and after the first reading, it was put out to the community for comment.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Not really a question. I guess it's a comment, but I guess it's close enough. I wonder if as a group, we could suggest that this be relooked at in a year? In other words, it's a fairly new thing for this city to have this kind of change. And I wonder if we could just pencil it on the calendars to maybe take a look at this and see how it's operated after a year? In other words, has it been utilized? If so, in what manner? Do we have a lot of complaints? And just kind of get the lay of the land so that maybe this needs to change. We're kind of creating something somewhat out of whole cloth here. And so I might suggest that we make a note to take a look and see how this has been implemented and worked over the next year.
Absolutely. And that was also the recommendation of the study group, that it be reviewed in one year.
Is that part of our resolution, or can we make it part of the resolution, that in fact, we will reexamine it or have staff look at it after a year's time?
We can certainly make that part of the motion, if you want to offer that as part of the motion. We could certainly do that. Other council members? I had posed a couple of questions at work session. One was, do we have, I know the intent of this particular ordinance is to address food carts on private property, not on city right-of-way or public rights-of-way. Do we have the ability to provide for food carts on special occasions, on city right-of-ways? And what I'm thinking about is festivals we may have, et cetera.
This -- I'm sorry.
And I know the answer, Shields told me, but I think it's important for the public to know, that yes, the answer is, I understand it, is if it's a special event, that we do have other places in the code and the discretion of city staff, that food carts can be utilized on special events and special occasions, on public rights-of-way.
That's correct. So this particular ordinance allows for the city manager to authorize an exception for that purposes. There's also another process for, for example, the farmer's market, for food trucks to apply to participate in those events.
Okay. And the second question that I have, which I don't believe I have an answer to yet, is I know in the ordinance, we talk about the carts can operate for three hours in a given day, but we don't specify sort of what hours in between they can operate at. What I'm driving at is this is sort of a cutoff in the start period within a 24-hour period.
There is not, in the ordinance, a cutoff within the 24-hour period. It simply states that a food cart or truck can operate for three hours at any one property. And so that would need to be covered, say, for example, on watch night, where we may want to have trucks operating until midnight. The food trucks, according to this ordinance, are not allowed to operate on private, the private property, well, I don't say private property, but the residential areas of the city. And so if there is an issue after a certain hour, it would be covered by any noise ordinance. So for now, as stated, there is not, it doesn't say that food trucks can operate between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. It can be really, really any time.
So, yeah, in this ordinance, there is not a restriction on the time of day. And typically, in the zoning ordinance, that is, you know, that is a provision that is for certain uses. You can't operate overnight, but there are other uses that you can, commercial uses. And so this is not really addressed in this ordinance.
I think we may want to give that thought, because I'm seeing it, you know, this is sort of incremental. You know, I just, we're going to have a lot of developments, et cetera, happening where food trucks would be a natural. And, you know, I think we've had complaints from neighborhoods about trucks coming in early, whether they be related to, you know, development that's happening. I think we have heard quite a bit on the Gateway Project specifically. And if we add to that without any regulation of food trucks that may be showing up early for breakfast before the crews get in, that's just another recipe for issues. And if we have no way of regulating it, I could just see the city manager saying to citizens, "Well, nothing I can do." And that's just not a satisfactory answer. So, and I think this issue, I'm fairly certain, dare I say, is going to come up, about the hours of operation and also hours that the trucks can be parked. And I raised this at work session. So I was hoping that we would have this squared out, but perhaps this can come back for further refinement, because I don't want to hold this up. But I'd like this coming up forthwith, because I want to make sure that the city staff has tools to deal with it. And frankly, I don't want to be getting calls about this, and you can already see that happening, where food trucks are coming in early and it disturbing the surrounding residential neighborhoods. So, ala what we've seen on some of our recent developments. So if we can, you know, even before the year, bring this back, you know, in the next few months to tie up that loose end and make the amendment, I don't want to try to do that from the dais or without further staff review what those hours should be. But two issues that I do think that we need to address is sort of overnight parking of the trucks on a given site and two, the hours of operation and whether that needs to be and how that needs to be worked out and what those hours are best. And I think we need to hear it from the group that's been working on this, rather than trying to do that tonight. So sorry to ask for it to come back, but I think it's important that those two issues be addressed. All right. But other than that, I don't have any other questions.
I've got one more question, if I could. What's the fine for somebody illegally operating? In other words, somebody, a mobile food truck shows up at a job site, what is the penalty or fine? Do we know? Or could you let us know?
If there's a violation of the zoning code, there could be a fine.
Well, for example, a mobile truck, it's not permitted right now, right?
Right, right.
So if somebody turned up a week ago at 6:00 in the morning selling, you know, breakfast burritos to a crew of folks, what would the city do and what would the fine be for that crew or truck?
Let me ask Jim what it is, real quick. Jim, what's the fine for violation of zoning? It's significant.
There's a process where you have to, if you're running with the correct, you don't get fined until you go through that process.
I guess the reason I'm --
You don't write the ticket immediately, Jim.
I guess the reason I'm asking is, we're having someone go through a process of paying $250, go get a permit and do all these things, but I don't want it so easy that if someone does it illegally, they just say, "Yeah, it's okay, I'm not going to get a fine."
Yeah, no, it's a significant fine. And I'm sorry, I don't, can't think of what it is right now. It's $2,000. I mean, it's a significant fine, and the same thing with violation of the business, the business code. So if they're not business licensed and don't file their meals tax, it's significant. The fines are significant.
Have we ever issued a fine before?
Well, this will be the first time for --
No, no, but the trucks have been operating, right? This is a new law we have, but prior to this law, we've had trucks turn up and all this. I'm just asking if we ever enforced it. Has a fine ever been issued in the past before we allow it? We don't allow it right now, right?
I know on the business side, we have not. As far as zoning, I don't, do you know, Jim? I don't know.
People have been asked to move on and to quit the operation. It's not something like a parking ticket where you can immediately, if somebody gets fined, zoning violation, has several steps.
So it sounds like no.
All right. If I can get a motion, then we'll open this up for public comment. Dave, do you want to do the motion since? So what I would propose is that move to approve TO 20, or I'm sorry, 13-27 on second reading with the ordinance coming back to the city council in one year's time.
I'm not sure the ordinance would come back in a year. I guess it would really be a --
Review of, review of the ordinance.
Implementation or something like that. Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Taves has any suggestive language, but I guess that's the gist of what I would like to say, is I move to approve TO 13-27 with the amendment or with the request that the city manager provide a report of its implementation within a year of today's date. Does that work? Okay.
If I can get a second on that.
Second.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Great. And there would be an understanding that this would come back again for any tweaks that we need with the items that I outlined. Any comments by council members? Cindy, if we can have the roll call, please. Or Kathy, if we can have the roll call, please.
This is on TO 13-27 for second reading. Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Calen?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The next item is TO 13-28, which is the companion piece. TO 13-28, ordinance to amend Chapter 15 fees, Article one, in general, to add Section 15-2, mobile food service fees.
Counsel, I take it there's no questions on this? If I can get a motion, then we'll open it up for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve TO 13-28 on second reading.
If I can get a second, please.
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second.
Wipe the tears from your eyes.
Any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and close this to public comment. Kathy, if you would call the roll.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Calen?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The next item before you, counsel, is TO 13-30, ordinance to align the real estate tax share with the fiscal year. And I have recommended that this needs to be held over for second reading in January because I did not properly advertise it. It cannot be held for second reading. Okay?
So, yeah. We still need to have it for a public hearing, so I'm happy to do the quick presentation on this. So this is an issue that we've all talked about. It's unfortunate that it's not ready tonight, given the advertising issues. But again, as I've previously suggested, that this is a very important thing for the council to do in the future, to align the ears for a variety of reasons. One, it'll give us better accuracy in our numbers because they'll actually be in almost real time, and the variance of our projections will be essentially limited to just B-pole, meals, sales, taxes, but the real estate will be nailed down and we'll know what that is. So we're not viewing things 18 months out and then explaining why we're wrong every time, or allegedly wrong, or how we're running surpluses when we're not. And despite my attempts to correct it, I get accused of being funny with the numbers. Enough is enough on that. So it's time that we take this move, and we've done it incrementally. And first was the charter change, even though we didn't need it, but it was boot and suspenders. Now it's this action. So again, I hope that future councils will support it. It's unfortunate that we can't take action tonight. But if I can get a motion to defer it, and Cindy or Kathy's written the motion out, so if we can get the motion, then we'll open it up for public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to defer TO 13-30 to January 13, 2014, for second reading and public hearing and advertise the same according to law.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and close this item for public comment. Council members, any comments on this before we take a vote? Mr. Cale?
Just to say, I hope that the new council will seriously consider this. I believe this is an important change and will take some of the sting out of the issue of what is a surplus and how much it is. And so I think it'll be good for the comedy of the city council, excuse me, for the citizens to know that we're trying to make sure that there aren't funds that are left over from the year, which seems to be a problem in Falls Church. So I hope that the next council will approve this.
Other members? Ms. Berry?
Mr. Mayor, I strongly agree with your remarks and Mr. Calen's, and I will urge my new colleagues and my current colleagues who carry over to do same.
Anything else?
The only thing I would say is, I would hope that we can also have a discussion when this comes up next about how we're going to fund this first one-time changeover, because it will require some money. At the end of the day, it washes out over a period of years, but that first year, you got to get through it. So I would like some ideas or suggestions about that for next meeting.
All right. Anything else? And I believe that there were no public comments on this.
I'll take the roll call. Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Calen?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Next item before you is TO 13-41. This is on first reading, resolution providing guidance to the city manager on the development of the FY 2015 city budget.
Mayor Baruch, members of council, on Thursday, November 14, we met with the city council and the school board in a joint work session and reviewed our preliminary financial forecasts for FY 15 and discussed our cost trends, discussed our multi-year forecast with our CIP. The school superintendent presented information on enrollment trends. During this presentation, we walked through all of the revenues, local taxes and real estate assessed values, and we currently project that revenues will grow by approximately 3.8% in FY 15, which constitutes about $2.8 million higher than the current fiscal year of FY 14. So with that context of what our forecast is, the budget guidance has been drafted with two council discussions at work session. And I would just note that in the whereas is for this resolution, it does note the fact that these are preliminary forecasts and that the council describes in the whereas is of the resolution that there will be many opportunities to review additional information and get public input on ultimately the budget recommendations in March 10, before the city council ultimately adopts its budget next April. But this is preliminary guidance to the city manager to help put some parameters around our work together as a management team to present budget recommendations that meet the expectations of the city council going into it. I will just note a few features of the budget guidance. It does call out in the opening paragraph that the city council directs the city manager to prepare an FY 15 budget that maintains and supports the city's excellent schools and excellent government services and adheres to adopted policies on fund balance and debt levels that keep the city on sound and sustainable financial footing. It does call for work to gain efficiencies and consolidation of services with other agencies and other school division and with the school division to seek out the most cost-effective ways of providing services. An important aspect of the budget guidance is that it calls for the manager to present a budget next spring in which any increases in revenues for general government expenses are generated solely by economic growth. It does, there was a good deal of discussion in the work session about presenting scenarios for a budget that does not have any change or increase in the tax rate. And at line 23, it notes that using a whole-city approach to reducing costs, present options for maintaining a level of real estate tax rate. And that does come in the context of our budget forecasts on the cost side in our joint session with the schools and the -- a level real estate tax rate. And that does come in the context of our budget forecasts on the cost side in our joint session with the schools and the city council, that the schools are projecting enrollment growth and the cost increases that are beyond the amount that will be generated just by economic growth. And so that's the context of the discussion for that piece of budget guidance. Other key aspects of the budget guidance call for an emphasis on capital planning to maintain funding for critical infrastructure and to present multi-year scenarios to inform the council's decision-making for FY 15. One other note that I will just highlight that at the end of the budget guidance, there was discussion at work session about the loss of the payment lieu of taxes and the administrative cost allocation model. And in our revenue forecast, we've already built in that decrease in revenues because we will no longer have that revenue from the water fund to the general fund in the future. But that's represented in line 74, which says present a budget that absorbs the loss of those two items from the water fund without an increase in the tax rate. So that's a brief summary of some of the key points of the budget guidance. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this draft that is prepared for the council's review.
In council, I passed out one suggested addition that I would propose, and I made comments along the lines during our last work session. And in the staff report, I believe that Mr. Shields indicates that some of the comments were already there that I had made regarding CIP, but I don't think that they were strong enough. So what I'm proposing is, in the document that I gave you, is the addition that reads what you have drafted, meaning me, and this would be added at line 25, and it would read the CIP should be the main focus. Every effort should be made to hold the non-referendum CIP harmless. And you may be wondering why the references made or the distinction between non-referendum and referendum items is, and the reason for that is we don't know what the public is going to say about items that require a referendum. So the notion is to control the items that fall below that threshold and make every efforts to fund those items. So a little bit of a stronger message and a stronger commitment to the CIP without sort of making it impossible to prioritize, if you will. So I just wanted to see if council members had any reactions to that.
Just a question, if I could. You'd mentioned this the other day. For those following from home, describe a non-referendum CIP item.
Mr. Shields, what would that threshold be right now under the policy?
About 8 million.
So anything above 8 million?
So any durable good or building or whatever that's...
Any specific capital improvements project that's over 10% of the annual operating budget. Currently, that's 7.8 million.
So that number, the 8 million is not fixed. It's based on what are the operating budgets? Mr. Kalin?
I think I do have a question on the lines 15 and 16. Where you add services and programs and agencies. That sounds good. I'm just curious, though, if this includes the library? Because I would like it in school giving.
Well, I do know from many years of discussions that there are significant difficulties of merging a public library and a school library. The missions are very different and the materials are different. And so that has never been part of our serious discussions.
Is it excluded?
In this language, it's not.
Is there a way, at least if not changing, that it be a sense of the council? As that would not include, without getting into the language, a merger of the library with the school or whatever, if you have something else that anyone will put in? Of the sense of the council? That exists?
Certainly.
Ms. Berry?
I mean, I was, you know, unaware of the subtlety of this language. I appreciate that, Mr. Kalin. I mean, I, you know, if it requires a sense of the council, I'm perfectly happy to voice my support for any language that would ensure that the library remains, you know, that the library remains an integral part of the city and not subject to merger or acquisition.
I don't, you know, my view about it is I don't know if we need to have anything in there. I don't think anybody was envisioning that, especially since the library board trustees have a specific function as well. So I don't, they're sort of unique. But I think Mr. Shields, and again, this is guidance. It's not, it's a formal document that we've decided to do with some insistence on my part, but I think he gets the gist that if he starts merging functions with the library, that's going to cause all kinds of problems. So.
Okay. You're sitting there in contemplation-wise. What does that mean?
He's a deeply contemplative man.
The library was not something that I envisioned as being one that we were going to...
But you have given him an idea now, Mr. Kalin.
I know. You better stop now while you're here. Mr. Mayor, if I could, not that I'm claiming credit for this section because I don't deserve it, but I mean, as I read it, I envisioned that it would encourage, you know, a broad discussion across, as you say, agencies and the school division about achieving efficiencies and streamlining and, you know, better delivery of service and some degree of redundancy in a range of areas that next year's council would be encouraged to dig into and explore so that we are not, you know, coming to you with suggestions of a more minor nature that might not be worth the trouble. But you would come to us with bigger picture ideas.
Well, without wandering too deep down this path, I will say that regionally, there have been discussions about merging certain library functions. And they have never gone so far as to create a regional library authority. There have been very preliminary discussions about that, but it really has not gained traction for good reasons. But what does happen is there's a great deal of interaction amongst the different libraries, consolidation of services, joint procurement, cost-saving through shared library services, interlibrary loan. So there are all sorts of interagency actions that happen that I think produce a better product, but they're not in the nature of certainly what Mr. Kalin is talking about or going all the way to actually try to merge the governing structures. That is not a live conversation.
Mr. Cal?
I'd like the record to explicitly state, Kathy, that, and I believe, Ms. Berry, specifically do not believe that this language should pertain to that, to any merger of the library with anyone. And that's something that I certainly, as a private citizen, I will be following very closely.
And Mr. Kalin, just to, and you're talking about sort of the actual functions, not things like how you procure books or...
The actual...
Actual.
Function, what the library is intended to be. And to me, that makes sense. And I think it's a different thing if we're talking about IT contracts and riding on with other contracts or procurement of books. I think just so Mr. Shields understands that we're not saying that those are off limits. Ms. Berry?
And I would just, again, I think, Mr. Kalin, I was not alive to that language and how it could be construed. So I, yes, I would like to go on record as ensuring that, you know, the library remains intact and its services are not merged with other functions in the city. That being said, I also wanted to thank the mayor because I very much appreciate the emphasis on holding the non-referendum CIP harmless. I think this is something very important for incoming city council to be mindful of, and that is the long-term cost of deferring maintenance, of deferring critical city infrastructure because it will end up costing a significant amount of money. So to balance the city budget on the back of the CIP in the long term is a bad idea. It's a bad idea for the city. It's a bad idea for our structures, and it just, it costs, it ends up costing far more than you might anticipate. And I think we're seeing the results of that. I think the work that we're looking at at City Hall is certainly the result of years of deferred maintenance, and that runs into not only sort of infrastructure costs, but public safety costs, which I think we want to be extraordinarily mindful of. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, again, your emphasis on CIP.
Other members? Mr. Mayor's time.
Mr. Mayor, just a question. The schools approved, the school board budget is normally a part of the budget that you present. Nothing in here changes that. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So I don't really need to add language to that effect. Secondly, the way that this is appears on the paper, it's like the first part of this is sort of a preamble where in fact, the key direction from the city council is actually the first sentence. The city council directs the city manager to prepare an FY 2015 budget that maintains and supports the city's excellent schools and excellent government services and adheres to adopted policies on fund balance and debt levels that keep the city on sound and sustainable financial footing. And then it goes on to say, well, then to these ends the city manager should. Well, the first sentence is not an end. The first sentence is a direction. So my suggestion is to make it clear in the way that that's put forward because that's a fundamental direction that's part of this. The second point is, I like that we're paying attention to infrastructure. I always have, but I don't want to necessarily, well, I don't associate myself with points that deferred maintenance was in any way done except that was absolutely essential for financial purposes and that, in fact, we continue to maintain the facilities. But that's really just a difference in view of the past. But this is a resolution moving forward, and I think it's a reasonably sound one within the context of the answers that you've given me about the school budget. Thank you.
Other members? And if I can just make one point on the CIP, and certainly, Mr. Snyder, my point was not that we had been deferring issues, but this comment came in at a work session where we were talking about presenting an option for maintaining a level real estate tax rate. So what I didn't want to see happen through that effort is essentially causing a situation that we faced in the recession, which led us to make certain decisions. Not all of us agreed with those decisions, but they were what they were, mostly driven by economic circumstances. I didn't want to have language on the notion of presenting a level tax rate without acknowledging what that can mean. And I did have back and forth just so the community is clear with Mr. Shields on this point, and he assured me that he would not be diving to slash the CIP as the first item. But without knowing what the numbers are going to bear out, not knowing exactly what school numbers are going to look like, the CIP is generally the first place that managers will go to because it is large-ticket items. And I just wanted there to be an emphasis that we weren't going to go down that road without having lots of discussion. And given this budget guidance, I do fear that we are going to have to have that discussion, but so be it, if that's where the council wants to go. But at least at that point, we can prioritize between the operating budgets and the CIP needs. If I can make one point, I believe that my language actually probably cut too far in this document, and it should have actually had what's in there and then picked up also some of Wyatt's language about and should not come through deferred required maintenance or investment infrastructure projects in the CIP that would increase the city's costs in the long run. I think the rest of that clause was missing. I meant to only change the beginning. So I would propose that that essentially read, just so the record's clear on line 25, the CIP should be the main focus, period. Every effort should be made to hold the non-referendum CIP harmless. And then it would pick up with Wyatt's language and should not come through deferring blah, 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 blah. And then it carries on. I think that's a little bit clearer, and it's a little bit more visionary than what the heck does it mean to hold something harmless.
Okay.
Mr. Kalin?
I prefer that for me is makes a lot of sense. We do have someone in the audience who has had water in his basement for 10 years or longer, and I think he may not fully agree that the...
That we haven't deferred some expenditure, capital expenditures, particularly in the stormwater area, which is one of the benefits that we have now with the stormwater utility fund, a stormwater fund. But there had been years, I recall, when we got to the end of the year with a lot of budget stress, and that, the stormwater investments were one of the things that were sacrificed. And I believe, as I repeat, there is someone here who could attest to the damage that has been sustained to his house, which hopefully we will avoid going. So what a long-term maintenance is, what's adequate is up to discussion, but I do know that is one area that had not been attended to. I have to tell you, I won't be here to enjoy the show, but I'm not exactly sure this, you know, this, using a whole-city approach to reducing costs. I get the idea. I just am having trouble understanding how it's going to work out. If, for to pick a number, the schools say we need a 10% increase, and so that we won't be able to have a whole-city approach unless we reduce the requests from the schools, would the council end up in a position in end of April where it's looking for cuts solely on the city side? Or would tax increases then be something that would be on the table?
Other council members? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. You know, in reading this through, I thought we were pretty belt and suspenders on CIP stuff already. But I know this is something about which you all feel very strongly, and so I'm okay with what's here, and adding the additional language is okay, I guess. Something that I feel strongly about, perhaps this responds indirectly or maybe directly to Mr. Kalin, is exactly the scenario that he presents and one that, I don't know if we can avoid it, but I would like to try using this document to do what I did not fully understand last time around when this document was being discussed because I didn't realize guidance was as important as it is. I mean, this is really our opportunity to give you the closest thing we can to marching orders about how the budget should be built. So I appreciate your including the language in lines 13 through 16 about streamlining and consolidation and so forth. I appreciate the reference at line 52 to accurate and realistic cost figures as much as possible for City Hall library and school facility improvements, just because I believe that if we are going to tax people, we shouldn't have a pretty clear idea of how we're going to spend that tax money. And I think we're all getting closer to that point, and that's to the good. One question that I had is generally a question. Is there anything in here that would contemplate investments to promote economic growth? Like, let's, the EDA talked the other night about their land banking policy that they're, you know, bringing forward, and the EDC talked about it Friday morning. Is investments or investments of that nature, is there anything in our budget guidance that would, you know, let's say you're sitting down, you're trying to choose between spending a dollar on X or an investment to promote economic growth? Is there anything in here that has us telling you that we think you ought to think carefully about that? That you see?
I think specifically, if you're talking about the land banking policy, I do think that probably works best as a policy outside of budget guidance.
Okay.
So that that can be, you know, fleshed out with a larger strategy. This document has the danger of possibly getting a little bit too big.
Okay. That's fine. You don't have to answer any further. I get that. It is important. I mean, obviously, it's important. A lot of people talking about it, and the EDA is trying to do some good work on it. And so I'm sure that if opportunities present themselves and the budget has room for it, we'll try to do that. The other thing I wanted to pick up on is something Mr. Carter mentioned the other night at our work session, and I'm going to take a swing at it here. The current inflation rate for the 12 months ending October 2013 was 1%. 2013 was 1%. Okay? So, the world we live in, the inflation rate is 1%. By my lights, that means that as you devise the budget, and as the schools devise their budget, the mindset that we have, mentioned earlier about life in the nonprofit lane, the mindset that I have is that if you get a 1% increase in your budget, then you've kept up with inflation. You haven't lost ground, and that's okay. That's pretty good. If you get inflation plus 1%, then that's a 2% increase. If we think economic growth is going to be in excess of 3.5%, that's another multiple of the inflation rate. And so, I understand there are certain areas of the budget where escalating costs are beyond our control, inter-jurisdictional expenses, and other things that outstrip the pace of inflation. But, I mean, I would hope, my guidance request would be that we all enter into this budget season thinking along those lines, rather than, you know, if you get less than 3.8%, you're somehow, you know, being penalized. You're not. Anything over 1% is going to be an increase over last year. So, that's just a point that I wanted to make. And the only other question is in line 55 through 57, the fund balance, unsigned fund balance at the policy target as set by City Council resolution. As far as I know, the fund balance policy is still 12% to 17%. If I'm wrong, let me know. Just as somebody who works with words, you know, it's hard to be at a target that has a range to it, 12% to 17%. I would prefer that that said, "A fund balance in the policy range as set by City Council resolution." You know, to use the language that we have here now, again, suggests that somehow we have failed if we do not hit a target, rather than landing in the range. So, I just want, particularly new council members coming on, because I didn't fully understand, when I got here, it was pretty clear that the target was 17%, and we thought that anything less than that was inadequate. But that's not what the policy says, I don't think. So, we need to work that out.
One thing I would just note on that, that what the policy states is that the target is 17%. And then it has provisions where if, for whatever reason, it falls below 7%, it calls for the city to get back to its target within two fiscal years. And so, I think it does function really as a target. And then if you go below 12%, there's faster targets to restore it back to that 17% target.
Okay. Well, that's helpful explanation, and I hope our new council members, they may already know it. They're brighter than me. But I'm not sure the community understands that, and so an opportunity to explain that could be part of the next process, too, I think. Thanks.
Wyatt, just to continue that, the 12% to 17%, the 12% basically says, if you go below that, you're going to have to take extraordinary measures. Could be sudden tax increases. I mean, depending what kind of catastrophe took place, you know, a precipitous drop in real estate tax for some reason, and something unusual happens, there's a fire in a major public building or something, has to be fixed right away, whatever. But then you have to go back to 17%. Our internal, excuse me, our external auditors were asked in the meeting whether, how many months of protection most of the cities of our size, and they said it was about three, what is, three to six months, or around there, and we have two months. So, we are really, again, for the type of capital program we're looking at, if we don't hit 17%, look, the new council could do it as it wishes. We don't hit 17%. If you read the papers, investors are starting to wake up big time to the risks of municipal finance, and this will not be considered a very good decision if you want to go out and borrow a lot of additional money. If you want to test the market, cut it and see what the reaction is, and then you can find out.
Other members of council?
All right. So, go ahead.
Could I ask a question? As to your proposed language, just so I fully understand it, because I'm a little unclear. I gave an explanation, but it totally didn't ring in all the way. So, line 25 right now is a blank on mine, so this is an insert prior.
Yeah, so, correct. So, let me, so, would be right after, would be, I believe, another sort of sub-bullet after using the whole-city approach to reduce costs. So, it would drop in right there.
Let me ask, I'm not totally sure I follow you when you say the CIP should be the main focus. Should it be the approved CIP should be the main focus of CIP spending or something like that?
Maybe it should be the CIP should be a main focus.
Okay. And then I know you gave an explanation of hold the non-referendum CIP harmless.
Why the distinction again?
Excuse me? Well, just what you mean by harmless, in other words, is, could you maybe explain that again?
Yeah. So, what would be envisioned is that Mr. Shields wouldn't start without having deep and lengthy discussions with us, start removing the CIP items that are currently there, that were approved previously, in order to make his budget numbers work.
Okay.
So, for example, if he had, just take, pick a number, and I'm just, I'm grasping at numbers and hypotheticals here, but say he had allotted $1 million of CIP items in this year that were Pago, which I don't think exists, but theoretically, if he had, without saying this, he could potentially just strike the $1 million and add that essentially to his operating if he chose to. Not saying he would, because I think there'd be issues there, but this is to make it clear that that's, his target should not be the CIP if he has to make cuts. That's really the intent.
But so, by hold harmless, you basically mean will not be reduced, or not be?
Correct. Correct. So, the tension that I'm trying to purposefully create is there was a request to add in language about essentially creating an option that would have level tax rate. And that places a lot of stress on the operating budget as we know it, especially not knowing the school numbers. And what I didn't want to see happen is a diet that we were forced to have during the recession, where Mr. Shields, and again, I was, one of the rather vocal council members, thought it was, you know, difficult to cut as deeply as we did, but perhaps we needed to. And I think we did in the long run. And now we've built some of that capacity back up. I just didn't want to be in a situation where we're putting so much stress on the operating budget that we are then forced to make cuts on the CIP. So, essentially, creating a situation of our own doing that happened during the recession. And again, this is not to take, you know, any shots at previous actions, because I do think that we needed to take those actions. I maybe disagree on the margins of the depth and level, perhaps, and the length of time it took us to get back up to where we're at.
Gotcha. I mean, I understand, now I understand. The language is a little unclear to me, but I think I understand where you want to go with it. Thank you.
And then it would continue on, sort of helping to explain that out, with the "should not come through deferred required maintenance or investment in infrastructure," etc.
Okay.
All right. If I can have a motion, and then we'll open this up for public comment. So, there would be that one, one change on line 25 that I wrote.
You want that part of the motion?
It would need to be as amended, yes. You don't need to read the line, but I think the motion could be move adoption of TR 13-41 as amended. So, Kathy, does that work for the record?
That works for me.
That works for you, Kathy?
As long as what I have here is, at line 25, we're adding the words, "The CIP should be a main focus. Every effort should be made to hold the non-referendum CIP harmless." Is that correct?
"And should not come through deferred required maintenance or investment in infrastructure projects in the CIP that would increase the city's costs in the long run."
And you'll give that to me at the end of the meeting? It's here.
It's here. It's the one that's above.
Okay.
It's combining. It's combining the two drafts.
Okay. Got it. Got it. Thank you.
And adding the word "a" to an "a" that I forgot to add in. Mr. Tarter, thanks for the "a."
Sure.
No, it's an important "a." It's an important "a."
Armstrong landed on the moon. You know, that was, I think, maybe made it as well.
Oh, that's right.
A man.
Yeah.
So, I don't think there was a, well, that's, thank you, Mr. Tarter, for that.
Can we take the giant leap to voting on this, please?
Yeah. That anecdote. Do we have an actual, I didn't actually make the?
Yeah. If you can make the motion, Ms. Barry.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of TR 13-41 as amended.
Thank you. If I can get a second? I need a second if we're going to vote on this.
Second?
Thank you. That's Mr. Duncan on the second. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and close the public discussion on this, and ask for the roll call.
Just want you to know, since I seconded, I expect extra weight for my guidance on the budget.
On TR 13-41 as amended, Ms. Barry?
Madam Clerk, before we vote, I just want to make a quick comment, that this is an interesting and useful exercise at this point, but the next council really is the one who determines what the budget is, and circumstances can change, and policy guidance can change. But this is a useful way to begin the process. It reflects what I think is important, which is to maintain an adequate balance, but also assures that we maintain the excellent quality of our schools and services. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder. And I think that's a point that I had raised very beginning in this process. Given sort of the timing, it's really unfortunate that we're having to act on the guidance before the new council is seated. But I think it's important, given the schedule, which doesn't have a lot of flex to provide the guidance. And again, the new council is going to have to visit it, and I know that various members of the council have had conversations with some of the incoming members, and they're going to have to put further guidance into this. So, I think it will make for a bit of a challenging process, just given that the budget's sort of in transition between two councils. But those are the cards that, such as they are, that we'll have to manage. So, I think the best way to do that from a scheduling perspective is just making sure that we have enough work sessions to handle the bigger issues before we dive into the budget, sort of more line items. So, that would be one suggestion I would make to address the concerns that have been raised about that. Does that work for you?
Are you ready for vote?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Bruck?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next sign in before you is TR 13-44. I lost my agenda.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
This is a resolution authorizing the defeasance and redemption of all or a portion of certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the City of Falls Church, and setting for the details thereof and the provisions therefore. This is a resolution relating to the sale of the water system. The water system has debt that was issued to build infrastructure for the water system. What this resolution does is provide the authority at the time of closing, which is currently planned for January 3, 2014, to create the structures necessary to set aside funds from the sale of the water system necessary to defees that water debt. And we believe, based on current interest rates of the money that we will put into this escrow account to defees that debt, that the total cost to defees the debt will be approximately $18.5 million. And that's a lower figure than we projected as we were going through the referendum discussion. And so, when we talk about slightly larger proceeds, this is one of the reasons for that, along with a decrease in the cost of the pension costs and other costs that have gone down. We do have Michael Graff with McGuire Woods, who is the city's legal counsel, on this item, and Richard LaContra, and we're prepared to answer any questions that the council has on this item.
Thank you. Council members, any questions? Mr. Kalin?
I have a couple of questions. Richard, where does this show up at all on our financial statements, this transaction?
In our CAFRA, it doesn't show up at all. It only shows up in the notes that we are about to have this sale, or have the closing on this sale.
So, it is in the notes?
Yes, it is.
Okay. That this transaction has taken place. And if I understand correctly from our discussions, that is because funds are not being appropriated. It's a simultaneous transaction in which, the moment the sale is concluded, the funds are automatically transmitted, literally at the same time, and as such, it's not an appropriated amount, and therefore, it doesn't have to go into the city's financial statements. So, this is basically an off-balance-sheet item, correct?
It is an item that clears the city's liability for that debt, because it becomes the property of a trustee.
Correct. But it's an off-balance-sheet item in effect, then, right?
You may call it that.
Okay. Want to establish the type of transaction that we were prepared to do. Thank you.
Other members of council? If there's nothing further, if I can get a motion, then we'll open it up with the public.
Mayor, I move to adopt TR 13-44.
If I can get a second, please? If I can get a second? Is Mr. Kalin on the second? I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment and ask for the roll call.
On TR 13-44, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Bruck?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next sign in before you, TR 13-44, excuse me, 42, resolution expressing the goals of the City Council for the use of water sale proceeds.
Shields, are you going to do the staff report on this one?
I will. Counsel, as I noted in the last item, that we've been working through our projections as to what the net proceeds from the water sale will be, and we're currently projecting $14 million, and that is not a final number. That also will change over the coming weeks, as we finalize the unfunded liability for our pension, as we finalize the defeasement of our debt, which is interest rate sensitive up until the date of closing, as we finalize our legal bills, as we finalize the payout of accrued leave of employees and those items. So, there are a number of moving pieces to this, and this number will change, but we do not believe it will go below this number that's presented here tonight. In our prior discussions with the Budget and Finance Committee and with the City Council at work session, we've discussed certain broad scenarios and strategies for the use of these proceeds. What the council has set forth in its discussion is that it wishes for the use of the proceeds to be there for the benefit of the city, all of its taxpayers, for the broad public interest, that it be for the long term. In other words, that it be an investment that generates a long-term benefit for the citizens and taxpayers of the city. We discussed scenarios to illustrate how those, an investment strategy could work, and we provided some numbers for a pension plan investment scenario. We provided information on using the proceeds as investing it in our capital improvements program, and we discussed the creation of an endowment fund, which would generate a return on investment for the benefit of the taxpayers. The resolution that is before the council is a draft that has been prepared, that attempts to reflect the council's discussion in its most recent work session, and it lays out in broad terms the intentions of the City Council along the lines that I've described. It also sets forth in item four, that it is the sense of the council, and an advantageous way to accomplish these goals, i.e. these long-term goals, as described herein, is to place the net proceeds of the sale or a significant portion thereof into the city pension plan. As this will, over the long term, produce a higher return on investment relative to other options, reduce the city's annual actuarially required contribution, and produce a long-term benefit for the city's taxpayer. Now, this, I expect there'll be more discussion on this with the council tonight in terms of... of whether that properly captures where the council wanted to be at the last work session, but this draft is offered for your review, commentary, and action tonight.
Counsel members? Ms. Barry?
So that the public is aware, the discussion about whether this council should take any sort of decision or provide any kind of guidance with regard to the use of the water sale proceeds generated a robust discussion. I think, you know, all sides were honorable in this regard. There are some strong feelings one way or the other. I simply wanted to reference that at the work session on Monday and, again, tonight, I, for one, want to reiterate my support for the council taking an action tonight, even if it is simply guidance on the management of the proceeds of the water sale. Taking action does not preclude the new council from amending or indeed overturning this council's guidance, but the sale of the water system was a complex initiative taken on by this council and managed very successfully by staff and our legal team, and I want to thank, in particular, John Foster, Pat Taves, and Michael Klein. A decision regarding the proceeds of the sales is as embedded in the negotiations of the sale as the sale itself, in my opinion. To not provide guidance is to abandon our fiduciary and governance responsibilities. This process has been transparent and open to the public and has benefited from the public's engagement. At no time has the public been excluded from deliberations. So I therefore respectfully request that my colleagues take this initiative across the finish line and provide the public and the new council with a firm foundation from which to begin the next phase of important deliberations.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Other council members?
Yeah, I think perhaps I should go next. I think most members have probably read the note that I sent around in response to the manager's circulation of this draft language, and thank you for working hard to characterize what we discussed at the work session on Monday. You know, I'm in almost, well, sufficient agreement with all of it until you get to line 109, and I just don't feel that point number four reflects where we came out at our work session discussion on Monday. I understood it to be the case that we were going to approve a document that spoke to goals and, you know, sort of higher altitude things, and we're not going to single out or express a preference for any particular approach. And so I'd be quite willing tonight to support everything that's here as long as lines 109 through 114 are excised. I mean, I have some other things I would say about particulars of the language prior to that, but I did want to put that out right now and see if I heard our discussion on Monday differently from others.
Other council members? Mr. Kalin?
Big shock. We're not on the same page on this issue. I would like to take a moment or two really, because we left that discussion at the work session with some hanging threads I want to clear up. One was that there was going to be, Dave, you raised the issue at the end of the meeting, whether this council had the authority to commit funds. It's been looked into, and I understand our legal team believes that it's not possible to do that. I have to accept that. I believe it's not correct. The transaction could be handled in exactly the same way that the transaction is handled for the defeasance. The pension plan is a fiduciary fund. We do not appropriate the interest earned on that. It stays in the fund. It has its own bank account. In fact, I just simply disagree, and I'm sure, as I mentioned to you, if I went out and let independent counsel, there could be a discussion amongst lawyers as to how that language should be interpreted and whether the pension plan, in fact, could have been eligible to receive the funds in the same manner as the fees as an off-balance-sheet item, but it would show up in their balance sheet as a $10 million increase, or whatever is decided. So I want the record to be clear on that. I accept because I have no choice, but I don't agree with the interpretation. That having been said, there was some other statements that I would like to correct. During that meeting, it was indicated that there were two council members that said they did not want to place the funds prior or any direct, real serious direction because there was time for public discussion, the prerogatives of the next council should not be ignored. Specifically mentioned was that the use of the proceeds of the funds was actively discussed during the election, and was also stated that the citizens were not, were asked not to speak about the use of the proceeds that might negatively affect the negotiating position. Those are not accurate statements. The fact is, is that it barely came up during the election. I think the only, I heard it twice, I think, one in a forum at the VFW and then at the League of Women Voters meeting, and that was it. I was the only person to make a formal proposal, and I did that in February of 2012. Why did I make a proposal? Because our council, who has done many water sales, said that the two issues that citizens are interested in are changes in water charges and that the use of proceeds is normally a very big deal. So I wanted to make sure that if we proposed the sale of the water system, that we would also give the citizens, at the same time, an opportunity to see that thought had been given on how it might be used. The other point is, the council never gave guidance to the citizens. It can't. It told the city council, and I believe the school board, not to tout the benefits of the sale until we had it further along. But any citizen could have raised the issue, and there was no attempt to in any way suppress citizen commentary or discussion. It just didn't occur. So it was not such a hot item as was presented. Now, basically, what I, one of the things that is so concerning about your idea, Phil, is the risks of an unstructured discussion, and I think these risks should not be underestimated. If you go out, according to your idea, and you ask citizens for their input in an unstructured fashion, I think, I don't think you're trying to sabotage, I think this is what would occur, then everybody who has a request for funds will come forward, and we will get multiple requests, and this council will then have to spend, starting in February, six to eight weeks with town hall meetings, getting people to say what they want, and then their appeals, the arguments. It should be used, we already have a letter that came in from a school board member that wants to use it for operating expenses, perhaps to have an all-year-round school. Exactly the wrong type of discussion we want to have because that becomes then a permanent expense, and we've actually then made our case much worse. So I think there are serious risks. So if we do that, then, especially for the members, the new members of the city council who have not been on city council before, at the exact time, they should be doing all the best they can to learn about how the FY15 budget should be constructed. They will then be spending meeting after meeting, talking to citizens about, you know, can we do it? We have so many, so many different clubs and associations. Once you open up that can that everybody can have a say, it's almost impossible to stuff that genie back in, and it will come apart. And we will have been the cause, not of a distribution that people like, but of hard feelings. How come I didn't get what I wanted? Phone calls to the city council members, pleading with, you support my request. If you don't support it, I voted for you, so you got to support this. There's no end to that. The proposal around regarding the use of the proceeds to save three cents, three cents on the tax rate every year in perpetuity has no winners and has no losers. Everybody gets the same treatment. It doesn't have to be defended as why one group was favored over another group. I think it's a very, very dangerous approach to leave it as an unstructured request, throwing it out to the committee. Did you have a specific proposal? I mean, that you think would be better? Bill?
Well, I mean, I'm happy to entertain a motion to suspend the rules if that's where the council wants to go, but otherwise, let's try to keep it somewhat organized.
Well, I'll get back to that if it's necessary. Then I'll, we'll draw that question.
So, Phil, if you want to respond, I'm happy to entertain it.
You know, I'm happy if the mayor would like to entertain a discussion.
But I just don't want to get it up back and forth unless we're going to suspend the rule.
Exactly. I don't want to monopolize everyone's time. The merits of the idea, maybe 100% lock solid, for sure, good thing to do. I just personally feel that the success of our work on the water issue so far has been because we've been very methodical. We've sort of taken one challenge at a time, you know? We got the negotiations over with, you know, we don't need to go over every step of it, but we've been very, step by step. I remember running for office in May of last year, and people were asking me, how are you going to spend the water money? And I said, you know what? I'm not elected, and we're not there yet. We're not going to talk about that now. We'll talk about it when the time arises. Fast forward to where we are now, I mean, the document that we've got before us has some legitimate, you know, questions, information we've requested our financial advisor to provide. We're working with the city's actuary to model, you know? There's language in here that suggests that the city's actuary will be prepared in January to do such a thing. You know, there's plenty of language in here that suggests that this idea, marvelous as it may be, just needs some more time to bake, and that's really all I'm asking for. I'm not in any way throwing down on the idea. It is a process disagreement, I think. I do feel that we'll benefit from a broader discussion. Good ideas will emerge that may not be evident to us now. Mr. LaConde, at the EDA meeting on Tuesday, was talking about a fund within a fund, as I understood it, to hedge the risk involved in putting money in a pension fund, because we all know that at some point, the market will collapse, and whoever's sitting in these seats at that time will get antsy that we're not sufficiently funded for our pension. So he was explaining to the EDA, which asks some very probing questions about this proposal, because they're very smart people, you know? He was attempting to respond to them with some ideas that he was wanting to explore further. I don't want to speak for him, but that's what I understood. All that is just to say that I would be very comfortable if we had a document that ended at line 109, 108, and that we said we would be putting it out for public comment till the end of January, and the new council would take it up at its first work session in February.
Other council members?
This is, we suspended the rule?
We actually haven't.
There's another now option.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks very much. I think it's important to just review quickly what this, what this does and what it doesn't do, and maybe we can find a way to get folks to vote on this and move this along quickly, as quickly as we can. The first thing is that we just, there are statements of facts, and then we go on to say that we want the best return, and that an advantageous way to accomplish that is the proposal that we've heard about putting the money in the pension plan. Now, I have some questions about that. I've always had questions about that as it's been presented, but we're not saying it's the exclusive way, it's the way that we're deciding we must go. If it said that, and if that was the intent, then I would vote against this resolution because ultimately, whatever we think as a city council, the $14 million belongs to the citizens. The citizens need an opportunity to discuss and know more about what the options are, despite the good work that's gone in. And I want to recognize Councilmember Kalin for the good work that he's put in in fleshing out a proposal. I view that as simply a proposal with certain advantages and disadvantages that should be weighed in the future by the citizens and the council. If that's what this says, it lays out some basic guidance, and that it recognizes that a way to go, not the way necessarily, is this proposal, then I can vote for this. It also doesn't preclude, it seems to me, the kind of discussion that Councilmember Duncan feels that we need to have going forward, and I believe we need that discussion. It is helpful to lay out the council's ideas to help inform that discussion, and so that's why that's the current wording of this. So I guess I find myself looking at this, saying that we're not precluding other options. We're saying that this option seems to look good at this point, but there may be other options that would come forward, things that we've analyzed, or perhaps other things that we haven't. But if this is directing a particular course at this point about where to put the money with the little community discussion that we've had so far, considering the size of the money involved, I can't vote for it. If it says, here are some ideas, here's our best thinking at this point, here's an advantageous way to go about it, but we're going to have a lot of community discussion, perhaps in a short period of time, but a fair amount of community discussion on this before we arrive at a final conclusion. If it says that, then this is something I can support.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Tarter?
I would echo, I think, those thoughts as well. I mean, to me, so far, this is the best plan I've heard, but I guess I could be convinced otherwise, but putting it in the pension plan, again, is the best proposal that I've heard to date, but I keep an open mind, and so I guess I would echo as well what Dave said.
And on this point, I do see this, and I'm looking at the language very specifically, similar to the way that Mr. Tarter looked at the missing "a," is that this reads that "an advantageous way," so it doesn't preclude other options from being discussed. And I guess, Mr. Duncan, I view it, you know, slightly differently than perhaps you do as process issues. I think putting this out there, letting folks know what our sense is, not binding this council or future councils to any decision actually may spur further conversation, rather than just saying, give us your greatest ideas. This may actually be a way of putting something up on the chalkboard and letting people react to it and go over it. And similarly, I do think that there's pieces of information missing that we need to have further discussion about, and that deals with sort of the technical arc of what we'd be looking at and getting hard numbers. I know that we're still waiting to get that from staff and actuaries, just so we can really understand what we would be saving by doing this and what the actual dollars are. But I think right now, it's headed in the right direction. But again, I don't, I wouldn't be ready to make a final decision on options of the best use of the money until we see the actual ARC numbers and what they are, and truth-test those and look at those more carefully. But given that this stands for really a sense of council or where we're headed, I think this gets us there. The one suggestion that I would have is that, is that we add somewhere in the beginning that it's the council's fiduciary responsibility to ensure the sales proceeds are put to use exclusively for the broad public interest and benefit of all taxpayers, just to, you know, put it out there that our goal is to treat all constituencies in the city equally as we look to the uses of these funds. So, and I had heard some comments along these lines earlier. So I'm happy to get council members' reactions to that line.
Could you repeat that, please, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. So it'd be at line 20, or I'm sorry, line 101, so it would actually start with, it is the council's fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the sales proceeds are put to use exclusively for the broad public interest and benefit of all taxpayers.
Well, let me ask if there's one other thing that we could add, and that the city council recognizes that there will be further community discussion before a final decision
I think that's implicit, and I understand, as I understand it, Mr. Shields and Mr. Taves, if you want to chime in, on the actual technical use of the proceeds, it's going to require some type of ordinance, which would require public hearings and advertisement. So that's just stating a fact.
Right. A lot of the... A lot of this is
A lot of this states a fact, so I don't, I hope there's not an issue with sort of stating the obvious, if you will.
The discussion that Mr. Kalin referenced, there's a city charter provision, 6.17, that says basically that the city council must have the funds in hand, and that must be certified by Mr. LaConde before you can appropriate funds.
But I'm talking about the appropriate, once we have the funds, so skip ahead to January.
Sure.
Once we have funds in hand, it requires a budget, essentially, action, which, as I understand it, requires two readings. It would be in the form of an ordinance, not a resolution.
I think it's a budget ordinance, yes.
So, Mr. Shields is shaking his hand, shaking his head, so that's sort of my understanding that there would be public discussion, you know, well in advance of that.
Mr. Kalin?
That makes sense. That's fine if people want to go with that language. I had other ideas, but I'll accept what has been proposed. And I think why, you can verify that I have been asking for our financial advisors to come up with a better plan. What have we had? Six weeks now I've been asking them to come up with something that's better? Truth test this, and they have not come up with anything that produces a better rate of return. I would like to make it clear, I did this for a living. I don't need to hear from, I know what an actuary does. I know how to manage. One second.
I'm not sure I remembered that.
You know, I know how, what they're doing. I know what market volatility is. There are trillions of dollars in pensions, and we're not the first organization to have to deal with market volatility. There are innumerable ways to manage. It's not the mystery that we're making it out to be. This is not that difficult a problem to manage. Richard's way could work. There are other techniques. That's almost bordering on an administrative issue, not something that you want to discuss necessarily with the community, because it gets very arcane, and it's not going to add to discussion. What I would suggest is that you have some sort of timeline, and as I mentioned before, to put it a little dramatically, you're setting up the new council for failure if it's going to go out and then be, on February 1st, you start to discuss how you're going to divide the pie, because it will have to then have town halls. It'll have, it won't be just coming up here, and it's going to take a lot of time, and it will eat into the time this council, the new council, will have to discuss the FY15 budget, and that is going to be a challenge in itself. So, make sure that you have a timeline, if you're going to do that, that actually allows from decent discussion, or you guys will be meeting yourselves in the hallways, going from discussion of the sale of the proceeds and town hall meetings discussing how we're going to do the FY15. I don't think the citizens are going to be too thrilled with that either. So, maybe just make sure you have a timeline, and it's actually manageable and allows for the type of citizen input that you request. But otherwise, I'm prepared to live with Dave's language and Nate's language, and I'll drop it at that.
And, Mr. Kalin, just for clarification, when I went by truth testing, I was not talking about the merits of the proposal, but rather than understanding the arc, once we get an arc, because I don't think that we've gotten sort of an arc from the actuaries. We've sort of gotten ranges. That's what I was alluding to, is understanding the arc and how we got there and what it means once we get what you've been asking for several months, which I understand the frustration, and I wish we had had those numbers, but we don't.
And I'm not recommending a specific number. That will have to come out.
And that was simply my point. It wasn't necessarily about the merits. And on the notion of sort of this free-for-all on what the use of the proceeds, that's why I felt it pretty important that the fiduciary language be right in the actual senses, rather than somewhere outside the document, is to try to make that very clear. Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, let me try to move this forward procedurally.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of TR 13-42 with the following amendments. At line one, after line 100, quote, what's your language?
It is "the city's fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the sales proceeds are put to use exclusively for the broad public interest and benefit of all city taxpayers."
And next paragraph, "It is recognized that there will be further community discussion before any final decision is made, but that discussion should occur on an expedited basis." Period.
Can I speak? Let me ask, what's intended by, when you say "the benefit of all city taxpayers"? I'm not sure I understand that. Let's say, for some reason, somebody proposed, you know, a new school, not that you could get one. Would you not consider that the benefit of all city taxpayers?
No, not necessarily. That wouldn't necessarily exclude them out.
Would or would not?
It would not.
It would not? Okay. So, what kind of public expenditures would not be for the benefit of all city taxpayers?
I mean, I don't want to get too far into hypotheticals, but it would be, you know, exclusive use for something. You know?
The only reason I
You can answer that.
You could use, if we saved, for example, a million dollars a year, and the city council then said, "We'd like to apply that to an additional $10 million bond," or whatever it would be, which turns out for school expenses, the city council could do that. It doesn't, it just says that the way the $14 million is invested, if you like, that the proceeds would become available, and then the city council could decide the distribution of that revenue.
May I ask a question about how that language would square with what is said in line 111, where we talk about placing net proceeds of a sale or a significant portion thereof into the city pension plan? You know, I've read this six ways from Sunday, really trying to be for it, because I know a lot of work has gone into it by my honorable colleague, and I actually, you know, thought maybe that was an escape hatch that I could go through, because one problem that I have with this is, you know, we campaigned on a $10 million number. That's what we told the people we were dealing with. Maybe it had a little flex in it. I believe there was some kind of suggestion that it would be at least $10 million. And then it became, in one document last Monday, $14 to $16 million. $16 million is actually written down somewhere. Okay. Tonight, we got a different number. Well, it's in the range, but it's sort of settling in at 14. Okay. I mean, to me, if we campaigned on a $10 million number, and now we have $14 million, that by itself requires, you know, full and extensive public discussion. I mean, I just could not disagree more that there is some risk involved in having an unstructured discussion with the citizens of Falls Church. I've just not found them to be dim people, quite to the contrary. They usually inform and improve the product when we engage in dialogue with them. And so, I guess I have a question. How much money are we talking about? Is it $14 million? And if we don't know, then why on earth would we vote for anything that would even suggest to pick out an option that we don't have all the information on? I mean, really? Are we really going to do that? If we are, I just, I can't go that route. I did have a specific question. I mean, if we were wanting to go into some more details about the merits of the idea, I would like to hear just a little executive summary of what Ms. LaConde told the EDA the other night, because in my mind, it raised a question as to whether the yield from this vehicle, which is being suggested to us as "an advantageous way," and let's not kid ourselves, if we're picking out something that is an advantageous option, we're suggesting that it's the one that we want followed. I would like a little better understanding of what you described at the EDA meeting Tuesday night, because as I understood, a certain portion of the money is going to be set aside within a safer investment vehicle inside the pension fund, so that we can cushion ourselves against fluctuations. Okay. Well, then, in the long run, what is the average yield of that blended fund going to be? And is it going to exceed the, let's say, 40, 50, maybe 70-year value of, say, a structure, of a city hall, or a library, or a school? Personally, my best investment in life has been the real estate I bought in Falls Church, you know? There've been a few years, and it went down a little, but in the long run, it's always gone up. And that, what you said Tuesday night, Mr. LaConde, raised questions in my mind that we just ought to discuss that. We ought to think about whether some sort of blended approach, as contemplated by the alternative that we're declaring is advantageous, is, in fact, going to yield in significant excess to what another option would, considering that everybody agrees that if we go this route, it locks it up. We can't get back into it.
So, right now, where we stand is we've got a proper motion, and I've asked for a second, so.
Be amended motion, right?
Yes. That was the motion that was made by Vice Mayor Snyder.
I still have one concern about the word "all," and I guess I just want to understand whether that means that something that, you know, the schools, maybe they don't benefit everybody. I don't know what the meaning of that word "all" is, and I prefer to actually be strict and just say "for city taxpayers." Would you be agreeable to that? In other words, to say "for city taxpayers"?
Yeah, I mean, that's
Well, I'm concerned that it may mean that it can't be something that, for example, a library. Maybe a library doesn't benefit all city taxpayers.
I'm not wedded to that language.
Well, I don't know. That's why I asked for that question.
I mean, it could be to the benefit of, you know, city residents.
City taxpayers is fine.
I mean
Just the "all" word. It gives me some concern that it's somehow trying to, cannot be a specific project, for example.
I'm not, I mean, that's, yeah.
I'll accept the deletion of "all" as a friendly amendment. Will you?
It was your motion, so you could accept that.
I'll accept it, but the seconder needs to accept it, too.
Was it, I don't think we had a second, did we?
Have a second, but I'm happy to second it.
Okay. We got it.
Okay. So, Kathy, you've got it?
Not really, but I have tape, so.
Okay.
I've got the language.
I've also have it as well.
I've got part of it, but I don't have all of it.
Okay.
But you will be able, of course, to read it all back to us before we vote.
I think Dave can.
You're looking at me like, you're looking at Dr. Doom.
Between Dave and I, I think we've got it, so.
Well, let's just take a second here. What do you have, Kathy? Just so everybody's good with it. I don't know.
Starting at line
After line 101.
It's after line 101.
No, I'm sorry, after line 100.
What I have at line, what we're going to do is add a new paragraph one, saying, "It is the council's fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the sales proceeds are put to use exclusively for the broad public interest and benefit of all city taxpayers, and it is recognized that there shall be
No. I'm glad you read it back. Okay. One, just delete "all."
One second.
Okay.
Instead of "all city taxpayers," of "city taxpayers."
Right. And then number, then number two
And then two.
"It is recognized that there will be further community discussion before any final decision is made."
Okay. Recognized that there will be
Further community discussion before any final decision is made.
Two, "There will be further community discussion before any decision, final decision is made."
Yeah.
Period. Thank you.
And then the other paragraphs would be numbered, renumbered accordingly.
Right.
Okay? Does everybody understand what the text is?
That's a lot less than what I had originally. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for making that short. I appreciate that.
And thank you, Madam Clerk. So, we got it? That's the motion.
So, we have a motion, but I don't have a second.
We do. Johanna's second.
Johanna's the second. Okay. Did you want to open that up for public discussion?
Yes. I'd like to open this item up for public comment, not seeing any. And I believe we had one comment that came in.
Written, right. All the written comments were summarized previously.
Great. Thank you.
Two of them.
I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment, and if we can have the roll call.
Just a question. Was there
Mr. Duncan?
Further questions or discussions? Was there a public notice situation for this? I mean, I know it came up at the work session last Monday, and is this in the nature of the kind of thing that, have we duly publicly noticed this?
Resolutions are not noticed unless there's a specific public hearing on something. So, this was not only noticed by way of the posted agenda, but there was no notice on the newspaper for this particular item.
So, is that, I'm not trying to accuse anybody of anything. I'm just asking, is, I mean, I
That's the, that's normal practice.
Okay. So, even though we haven't gone to extraordinary lengths, it's legal at least.
Let me ask, look, this issue's been discussed publicly, right?
Right.
And how many agendas has this appeared on? This appeared on the work session agenda last week, right?
I
Right. And that was publicly noticed. It appeared on this agenda, so that was publicly noticed as a resolution. We're saying here, this is some initial guidance from this council, but we recognize there'll be further discussion. But I think the point here is made that we need to move forward on this expeditiously.
I mean, if I can just jump in, this is not any different. I mean, and again, I don't want to sort of shortchange this either, but this is not different than what we're doing with the budget guidance, is setting a direction. That doesn't mean that we're going to come out in exactly the four corners of the budget document, nor does this say, "This is absolutely where we're going to come out, and we're not going to be seeking further public input as we go along," and that there's going to be legally, as we pointed out, several opportunities for public discussion, as are required by the charter and by law, and in addition to whatever else we choose to do within a reasonable timeframe.
Right. Would you like me to call the vote?
If we can have the roll call, please.
Okay, I'll call the vote. On TR 13-42. Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The next item, counsel, is a resolution, TR 13-43, resolution to adopt city Falls Church stormwater utility fee credit policy.
Mayor Baruch, members of council, we've had a good work session discussion on this item. I'd like to invite Jason Witstrom forward to provide a very brief staff report on this item, and then answer questions.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, members of council. If you recall, back in June of 2013, the council adopted ordinance 1898 to create the Stormwater Credit Program. This ordinance served as the framework for the program, but we needed to go back and develop specific credits for the stormwater utility fee. Council adopted in July of the same year a task force represented by 10 members of the community from a broad range of stakeholders. I believe we have two members from that task force here tonight. We have Mr. Kalin and Mr. Volpe. The goal of the task force was to formalize a credit system that had a clear nexus between the intended effects and the benefits to the utility's mission. Over the past few months, the group met six times, along with our consultant and city staff. And throughout this process, the task force paid careful attention to the administrative burden and the cost implications of the policy that's before you. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the work of this task force, which is the Stormwater Utility Fee Credit Program that's before you as attachment "a." In summary, the credit policy is a guiding document for the credit utility program. In summary, it addresses a couple of key points that I'd like to briefly go through, and those are the percentages of credits for structural facilities that address water quality and quantity. Quality has a 40% or a 20% discount for areas that drain to that, based on if they're conditional or not as part of the development, and the quantity has a sliding scale that starts between 10% and up to 30%. There's also a point system for stormwater pollution prevention plans that can, residents can get an additional 10% off of their fee. The policy outlines the length a credit is applicable for, a minimum of 15 years. The eligibility criteria for structural facilities, which meets the Virginia Stormwater BMP Clearinghouse standards, and application process Clearinghouse standards, and application process, and a sample application is provided along in the report, and also the credit calculation methodology. At the final task force meeting that we had in November, general was, consensus was achieved on all of these issues. In one area, there was some concern because the task force recommendation did differ from what the original ordinance had identified, and in this area, the city council's ordinance had a 30 percent reduction for water quality facilities, and it didn't explain whether that was for conditional, a part of a condition for the development, or whether that was for something voluntarily done. And so, the task force found that members who do go above and beyond for stormwater quality should get a greater discount, and so, the task force ended with 40 percent for them, and they felt those that came under a conditional development should have something reduced, and they settled on a 20 percent. The other item I'd like to highlight in this is that the task force had difficulty developing a credit policy that created an incentive, and to get around this, they recommended in the future that the city look at the possibility of getting a cost-sharing program, potentially a city-sponsored grant program that could be funded by the stormwater utility. And lastly, I came around before the council met, and I gave the clerk a copy, but based on our previous discussions about this topic, and in understanding that it is a little bit difficult to get across, what we're going to do from this point on is to create a manual for stormwater credit policy, and so, I handed out an example that our consultant had been working on with Charlottesville. It's not finalized on their part either, this is draft for them, but we're looking to do something very similar, similar to this. And then the second hand I gave you is a picture of a sample home with, with the different types of practices that are contained within this policy, and I know some of the numbers may not add up right away, because we're, this is very draft right now, and some of the language as well, but the idea here to try and break it down is something that our residents can understand a little easier. So, tonight, the recommendation is that staff concurs with the recommendations of this task force, and that we recommend the approval of TR 13-43.
Thank you, Jason, and thanks for the graphic. I know it's one, it's a graphic I had asked for to just help make this a little bit easier to understand, combine sort of the credits with the fees and how it works out, and wasn't envisioning anything this pretty? I was thinking circles and Venn diagrams, but this is great, so thanks for delivering on this, I appreciate it. Council members, any questions? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, and I agree with you on the visuals. Thank you very much for that, helps to visualize it. The one question that I wanted to ask was about the grant program, which you referred to, or the proposed, I guess, or deferred grant program, maybe. So, I learned early on that, in discussing this issue, that small measures, while not unimportant, or not where the big bang is in this new initiative that we're undertaking, so rain barrels and such, while nice, are not the main event, and therefore, as this document explains on line 76 and on, we would like to incentivize significant stormwater prevention infrastructure to be built, and the cost of that, you run through, it's significant. Basically, as I read this doc, this document, it's not economically feasible unless the city matches 50/50 the cost, but yet, we're not going to do that, starting out, because we, it says here, want to wait and see how things work out for a year after implementation. I guess I'm just curious, if the 28,000 dollar figure is accurate, we had budgeted $100,000 for the credit program, we're only going to tap into 28,000 of that, is it possible that we could speed up or have less waiting time than a year to do the grant program to encourage larger-scale projects that would achieve the goals that we're looking at here? I mean, is there a really reason to wait that long?
Yeah, in drafting this recommendation that you see, starting line 97, I considered that, so the fiscal impact here that I'd stated is 28,000. This is based on the existing facilities that we know of in the city. There could be additional facilities that we don't know of, so that number could be adjusted. One thing that they could also take advantage of, almost on day one, residents could take advantage of, is the 10 percent discount off their utility fee. If you apply that across the board, the 100,000 would not be enough to fund that. So, it seems prudent to see how this goes, and then relook at, maybe in a year or two years' time, at what our needs are for stormwater, what we have in there for a credit policy, and then readjust our priorities.
Okay, that's responsive, I appreciate it. Just any back-of-the-envelope guess, I mean, if it's, if it is a $100,000 credit program, any guess about the staff time that it will take to administer a $100,000 credit program? I mean, as I read the document here, you know, there's some things, the smaller projects, particularly the smaller measures, are going to require a certain, you know, nose-on-the-ground presence. I mean, are we, are we basically going to need to spend the equivalent of how much of an FTE to run a $100,000 credit program?
Yeah, in ramping up for the stormwater utility, we considered this policy, in addition to some of the additional workload that we're taking out for stormwater, and so, we do have the staffing to do that, and we did keep our mind on what this policy meant in terms of staffing levels. I see Mr. Kalin kept us on that task very much. A lot of this does, the smaller items, is on our system. There is some tracking mechanisms in place today. For example, the Neighborhood Tree Program does record people who come in, and so, we'll just ask for that. So, there, some of the smaller ones, not so much, but the initial inspections for some of the larger credits that you could potentially get do require some staff time in there, and I feel confident that we can fit this in.
Okay, thank you.
Other council members?
Mr. Mayor, do we need a revision?
Oh, yes, we do, thank you. If I can get a motion to go past 10:30?
Mr. Mayor, I reluctantly move that we go past 10:30.
If I can get a second?
Second, reluctant second.
All in favor? Say aye, aye, any opposed, any abstentions? The ayes have it, we're going past 10:30.
I have a question about, not so much the credit, but I looked in the back of your credit example, too, and it shows a paved play area in a building. You're going to use GIS like a satellite? Is that how you're going to do it? Is basically scale off a satellite to figure out how big somebody's play area is, things like that, or are you going to enter people's property, or attempt to enter people's property to make those determinations?
The fee is based off a satellite image, and it uses a certain color that's reflected using IR, and it can tell us exactly what the surface is through a tree line, and so, we don't have to physically go to any sites. We do have a GIS analyst on staff that physically has gone parcel-to-parcel checking to make sure that, you know, real quick eye check to see that it fits.
So, that's what you're going to use, is some scale and figure it's mostly accurate, maybe not entirely accurate, but kind of halfway accurate to give you a first shot?
Yeah, and as part of the rollout, we will send a sample billing to each resident, and then it'll have a link to a website where you can physically see the impervious area that you're being charged for, and it is draft, it's about six months in advance of having to pay that first fee, and the idea here is that you'll have time to get back to us and say, that's actually not impervious, that's something else.
Thank you.
Other members of council? Thanks, Jason. If I can get a motion, then we'll open this up for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I move passage of TR 13-43.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
Is Mr. Carter on the second? I'd like to open this item for public comment, and I believe that we had one speaker slip, Mr. Volpe? Thanks for sticking with us, past 10:30.
Wow.
And for the record, you could have gone earlier.
It's my own fault. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Michael Volpe, 314 West Columbia Street, and I served on this task force. I was representing the faith-based community. I come tonight to, not as a representative of the task force or the faith-based community, but to talk about this policy that you have before you. I wish to say I support the credit policy that the task force has created. It was, in my opinion, one of the most pleasant and collegial efforts that I've ever seen in this city. I've been a resident of this city since 1975, served on a number of boards and commissions, and this went very smoothly. It was a very good discussion at every single meeting. That said, I wish to caution the city, the council, and the city staff, that the introduction of this stormwater management fee, not a tax, will generate, in my opinion, many questions and perhaps some opposition from the landowners here in the city of Falls Church. The credit policy, I believe, will help deflect some of the critical comments or questions about this new fee. I know there's a lot of detail that's in this credit policy. Witness my notebook here of the materials that I collected during our several meetings, but I think it represents the work of the task force, the city staff, and the city's consultant, to encourage landowners in the city to utilize stormwater management techniques to help the city meet its obligations under state and federal law. These techniques are different for landowners who have a single-family house or townhouse, and they're quite different for a commercial property or for a church. What the task force was trying to do was create incentives for each of these different landowners to participate in the program. Each landowner can decide whether or not to make the effort to incorporate some of these techniques, or just pay the fee. The other comment I would make about this new stormwater management fee is that I hope it is not the start of a series of fee-based programs in the city. I have been active in my church, Falls Church Presbyterian Church, for more than 30 years, and during that time, I have witnessed changes in the city's policy towards churches. Again, I am not speaking on behalf of the Presbyterian Church or any other faith-based community in this city, but I know from experience that the city no longer collects the trash or recycling at our church. It no longer vacuums the fallen leaves at our curb, or collects the brown bags filled with clippings and brush that are placed outside by the curb. Our church pays a contractor to handle each of these tasks. In my opinion, many churches will have trouble budgeting the funds necessary to pay this fee. While the average single-family homeowner will pay a fee of about $260 per year, my church expects to see a bill of about $7,000 per year, and many of the incentives in this draft policy would require large capital expenditures by the church. The money simply is not there to pay the fee and to embark on capital programs to install rain gardens or other stormwater management best practices. I wish to thank the mayor, the city council, and the staff for this opportunity to serve in the task force. I hope this new credit policy will be embraced by the landowners of the city, big or small, whether they be residential, commercial, or faith-based communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe those are all the speaker slips that I have on this agenda item. Shad, did we, and I believe you summarized any comments we would have gotten on this already, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and unless there's anything further by the council, I'd like to have the roll call vote, please. Mr. Kalin?
I would just like to thank you, regarding the collegiality. Given my temperament, I think that's a major compliment. I was on the task force, and I was on a task force that was one of the most collegial that Mr. Volpe has experienced since he's been here in Falls Church, and I'd like to thank him for making a compliment.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, just one minute of comment. Moving forward with this program, we feel that we're meeting a critical infrastructure need. I hope that we're going to be flexible enough to make changes, including coming up with more of an incentive grant program, if that becomes something we can financially do in the future, but we've got to get moving on this program, and I think, as the speaker well documented, the credit program will be critical, I think, in selling it, and informing the public as to what their options are, so for that reason, I'm willing to support this as well, with the understanding that as this program goes forward, we will be responsive to legitimate public concerns. Thank you.
Kathy, if I can have the roll call, please?
On to your 13-43, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item before you is TR 13-45, resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a lease with the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority for the Tanner Hill Historic Site. I'm going to read all three together because they're all together in your staff report. TR 13-46, resolution to authorize the city manager to execute two conservation easements on the Tanner Hill Historic Site, and TR 13-47, resolution to authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding between the city of Falls Church, Fairfax County, the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority, and the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation. And then the votes on each item can be taken separately.
Thank you. Cindy?
Good evening, council, and it's with pleasure and honor that I'm here before you with what will be a significant final vote for council, so that we can proceed in the partnership with the Tanner Hill Historic Site, that is, as you see in the background of the staff report, county-owned and city-owned land that would then be in partnership with the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation and the Regional Park Authority. Mr. Ed Henderson and Nikki Graves-Henderson are in the audience this evening, and they, of course, have been part of the partnership in working forward to this point. The Regional Park Authority and council also send their, our county also send their support this evening. As the staff report notes, you've had periodic updates, the last two in August of 2012 and October of 2014. There are three requests before you this evening. One is to approve a resolution for the 99-year lease, so it'd be between the city, county, and the Regional Park Authority. The second would be to execute conservation easements, so the land is protected in perpetuity for the historic and cultural nature of the land and the intention for which the land was originally purchased in 1999, and these would be cross-held easements, where the county would protect the land that the city owns, and the city would protect the land that the county owns. And the third action resolution would be to authorize the memorandum of understanding. This is a four-party memorandum of understanding that's really key to the programming, the implementation, and the maintenance of the historic site. It would be a term that's conditioned as part of the lease, and the two key players for that memorandum of understanding are definitely the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation and the Regional Park Authority, and the terms and condition of this MOU have been drafted initially as, by those two parties, and then concurrence by city and county. The resolutions are threefold, and they are, we are requesting three separate motions, as the city clerk noted. The resolutions speak to the terms and conditions, roles, and the parties of these three legal documents that move us forward. The final documents would be prepared with terms as is or better. These resolutions give the authorization to the city manager to execute them, and all final documents would be approved by the interim city attorney. We have transition between Mr. Foster doing the legal reviews, to Mr. Taves, and we will be, he actually does, may not know it yet, but he has a meeting with me Wednesday to start bringing him up to speed. The timing, we do ask, is this for to be immediate, so that we can wrap up the city's legal actions in this month. The planning- We are strongly anticipating a groundbreaking and an opening in the summer of 2014, building upon the Regional Park Authority's $175,000 CIP and Delegate Scott's grant funding of a $20,000. And the final thing I will note is attachment to this staff report is the Planning Commission's action of October 21st, finding in concurrence this project with a comprehensive plan per the Code Section 2232, which means we finally refer to this as a 2232 review, that the project is consistent in intent, character, and location with the comprehensive plan, and they recommend city council proceed and approve the lease easements and the memorandum of understanding. With that, I'm glad to answer any questions, and I, as will the Hendersons, I'm sure.
Mr. Mayor, to get things started, I wonder if I could move to approve TR 13-45, and then I'll move later on to approve the other two action items.
Thank you, but why don't we have discussion on all three, and then we can move separately?
Do you need a second?
Yes, please.
Second.
Any comments or discussion about this, council members? I'd like to open this item.
I'm sorry, is there time for our discussion?
I can open, why don't I open it up, public comment, and then we'll come back with any comments. The first speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Edwin Henderson. Mr. Henderson?
Good evening. I am Edwin Henderson, president and founder of Tanner Hill. I live at 307 South Maple Avenue. It's an honor to be in front of you today. And I'd like to also say that the executive director is here, Nikki Graves-Henderson, and one of our board members is here as well, Michael Everett. And this has come a long way. This has been a long time in the making. No one can appreciate that more, I think, than David Snyder, who 15 years ago, when he was the mayor, went over on that half an acre along with then-providence supervisor Jerry Connolly to talk about the possibility of building something to represent this history of African-American civil rights here in Falls Church on that land. And it's been a long time coming, and I'm so happy. I am elated that we're at the point that we are right now. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and I think that staff has been working so hard on this in the last couple of years to really make this happen. Probably more than that, I probably have to say, more than five years we've been working together with Cindy and Wyatt to really drive this thing home. And I think that when we finish this project in summer of 2004, everybody will be happy. So I just want to say thank you for putting in the time and the hours and the effort to bring this project to fruition. And I think one of the biggest issues was realizing that this is not something just for Tanner Hill, this is something for the entire community and people that will visit Falls Church, our little community, for years to come. So thank you.
Thank you, Ed, and thank you to the foundation and also to city staff and to Fairfax County for working with us in regional partnership to making this happen, and, most importantly, to Vice Mayor Snyder for sort of pushing this along.
Absolutely.
So he's really shepherded this to the city council, so really appreciate his efforts on bringing this to fruition from the council's perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the public comments that I have, so I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment. And then, Mr. Charter, I believe you had a comment or question?
Yeah, excuse my ignorance, but so we're basically turning over the property to the NVRPA, basically for the next century, right?
Correct.
99 years. They've committed, it sounds like, the initial phase of $150,000 or so, is that right?
$175,000 in the next CIP. They did arrange to $150,000 to $175,000, depending on the cost of the Phase 1 design.
So what happens after that? In other words, so we get the first phase of design and, you know, the initial maybe engineering or something. So how do we ensure this gets to the finish line?
Part of the partnership agreement of the MOU will be that the foundation, the Regional Park Authority, will continue to define Phase 2 costed estimate, and then do the fundraising and the partnership and bring it to the table so we get to the next phase. After Phase 1, we will have a partnership park that can be actively used and can tell the story, but to totally achieve the vision as the foundation presented in August of 2012, there is more fundraising would be needed. It's modeled similar to the Korean Bell Project that's at Meadowlark, which is another regional park authority project, where the fundraising has to come in partnership. When the fundraising and the money's at the table, then construction of the next phase will begin. And I know we have a commitment to get to Phase 2 once we succeed with Phase 1.
What does Phase 2 estimated to cost, roughly?
I think it was close to another $800,000, if I'm calling correctly. The total project was about $1 million. Once you have a site that can really tell the story and can draw people in, it also assists with getting those other grants and monies to the table.
So the other $800,000 is all private foundation money, or is the park authority committed to make contributions as well?
The park authority will annually do their CIP project, as does council, and so there will be requests in there for ongoing expansion. There will be private money. I know our new delegate for the General Assembly is putting a budget amendment, a request in, just as Delegate Scott had done, so it'll be a combination of funding. Council will have the opportunity to consider in future CIPs if you want to add to the investment as well. The current commitment is for the foundation to take the lead on helping to bring that to the table.
Thank you.
Other council members? Can I have the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just make just a couple of quick comments. The very same thing that Nelson Mandela fought for in South Africa and Martin Luther King worked for here was struggled for and fought for by the African-Americans whose memory we honor and whose memory we wish to carry forward to citizens who are here and citizens who will be here in the future, so that their example, their heroism, and their commitment to nonviolent progress on behalf of all humanity will never be forgotten. So it's a huge honor that we have to take this action tonight. I want to especially recognize Ed and Nikki Henderson, who without their work, this would not happen, Cindy Mester, who was the staff lead on this, without whose work this would not happen, the entire Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation, various other public officials, Fairfax County, and the Northern Virginia Park Authority. This has been a long time in coming, but there's a certain symbolism here that is far beyond anything I think we can even put words to this evening. So it's been, this is one of the things why we do public service, and it's a credit to the council and everyone involved, that we've brought this this far and that we're going to see a great idea converted into reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? If we can have the roll call, and before we take that, on the three items we're going to be taking up, as I previously mentioned, if anything is going to be going into the federal government on this or the federal courts, my name should not appear on it.
On to your 13-45 regarding the lease with NVRPA and Tanner Hill. Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Brook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item is TR 13-46.
Mr. Mayor, I move to your approval of TR 13-46.
If I can get a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment. Council, anything further on this before we take a roll call? Kathy, if you'd call the roll?
I'll be happy to. TR 13-46, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Brook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item is TR 13-46.
Mr. Mayor, I move to your approval of TR 13-46.
If I can get a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment. Council, anything further on this before we take a roll call? Kathy, if you'd call the roll?
I'll be happy to. TR 13-46, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Brook?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item before you.
Before we get to the next item, I'm going to go ahead and pass the gavel to Ms. Berry, given that as a prudential matter, I'm recusing myself, given my day job, in case there is a conflict in the future.
And Mr. Mayor, I too am recusing myself for reasons set forth in a prior meeting.
So Ms. Mayor Brook and Mr. Snyder are recusing, Vice Mayor Snyder, are recusing themselves, both of you?
Correct.
That's correct.
And Ms. Berry is taking the gavel?
So, too bad it's at 11 o'clock at night. This is a moment I've been waiting for, but.
But you can pound it.
I will wield my power.
Pound it really loud.
Yeah.
You could even move for a motion to adjourn right now.
I could just motion adjourn.
There you go.
So Kathy, could you read the resolution in front of us?
Yes, TR 13-39. This is a resolution declaring the position of the Falls Church City Council that corporations should not receive the same legal rights as natural persons, that money is not speech, and that political expenditures can be regulated.
So in order to move this forward, Cindy, you're prepared to make a staff report or just answer questions?
Very short statement. This is brought back to council deferred from your last council meeting. It is brought forward from the Northern Virginia Move to Amend Initiative, the citizens you heard from earlier, and be glad to entertain council's questions, and the request is, of course, to approve.
Okay, so if, in order to move this forward, may I have a motion? Mr. Kalen?
Can we read the, will you just say, I move to? I move to adopt TR 13-39.
Is there a second? You're not seconding. Can I second? Can I second the motion?
It pulls back.
Phil, are you going to second the motion? The TR?
TR 13-39.
TR 13-39, we need a second. I thought I was, too. Is there any reason I can't second the motion?
I don't see any reason why not.
Okay, then I'm just going to second the motion. So is there discussion on the motion? We've opened this to public, to the public, and we have received three comments, which we've already heard. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Okay, then I guess we close this to public discussion, council?
Sorry, had to step out for a moment. I, you know, wrote a stirring speech as to why this is a very important thing for us to do, but I'll spare it for you. I know it's late. I just want to thank the citizens who have assiduously and doggedly pursued this issue for several months now and have done a great service, I think, by educating the community and those of us on council, too. I've followed this issue since I was a cub researcher at Congressional Quarterly back in the late 1970s, and, you know, the post-Watergate reforms were new, and the notion of limiting and disclosing campaign spending was all the rage. The pendulum has obviously swung a long way in the other direction, and I commend the efforts of anyone to help move the pendulum back to a more rational point. Thank you.
Any other members of council wish to speak?
Sure. I support the underlying sentiment behind this motion. I think excess campaign contributions have distorted our political process. However, as a lawyer, I create and represent corporations, and I see numerous instances where corporations are treated as people. And I believe subsection A of this resolution is overly broad with unintended consequences.
Any other members of council wish to speak?
Sure. I support the underlying sentiment behind this motion. I think excess campaign contributions have distorted our political process. However, as a lawyer, I create and represent corporations, and I see numerous instances where corporations are treated as people. And I believe subsection A of this resolution is overly broad with unintended consequences.
Any other members of council wish to speak to this? If not, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Just trying to get that thought, excuse me. Okay, this is on TR 13-39, and Mr. Snyder is recusing himself, and the mayor is recusing himself. Okay, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
And Mr. Charter?
Abstain.
We have a 3-0 vote. Two recused, one abstained.
Is that? Mr. Taves, does it, does it pass, or what happens?
Where are we on that? It's a 3-3.
You have a quorum of four. You need a majority of that quorum, and that's three.
I now pass the gavel back to the mayor, and thank you for that brief and exhilarating moment. That was.
Made your whole four years worthwhile.
It did, it was the whole reason I ran.
And before we get to the next item, and this is one where it's probably okay for me to vote on, but given that it's going directly to a federal agency, even though I won't be doing it directly, I think it's best that I recuse myself from the next matter as well, just as a prudential issue as well. So I'm going to pass the gavel to Vice Mayor Snyder.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, will you read the next item?
The next item on the agenda is TR 13-48, Resolution Requesting the Environmental Protection Agency EPA to Act to Reduce Carbon Pollution While Building Resilient Communities.
Thank you very much. Is there any staff report on this item?
I will just note that we were contacted by Councilmember Berry with this item. The resolution was drafted by a citizen group in the city with the request that it be adopted. We did modify it slightly, just to sort of fit the Falls Church format, and it does call for the city council to support the EPA or to call upon the EPA to finalize the standards with respect to carbon pollution from new and existing power plants under the authority of the Clean Air Act as already directed by the president. And if this resolution is adopted, the city clerk will provide a copy of it to the administrator of the EPA.
Thank you very much. Entertained a motion on this item? Yes?
I move to adopt TR 13-48.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, and we open this item to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address us on this item?
Tom?
Have we received anything in writing, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, the public hearing portion of this item is closed. Entertain any other comments from council members. Councilmember Berry?
I'd like to address the multitude here in the chamber. But seriously now, folks, for anybody who's listening, I just wanted to read briefly what I had written to my fellow council members. Falls Church has taken a leadership role in regional jurisdictions on energy efficiency, stormwater management, and compliance, recycling, climate change. I ask that my city council colleagues vote positively on this resolution and thusly maintain the city's important commitment to sustainability. I very much appreciate your positive vote on this.
Thank you. Does any other member of council wish to make a comment? I'd much like to make one comment, which is extreme weather is a major issue with very, very significant local impacts, everything from flooding to the need to harden our facilities. The council of government had an interesting session with all the The council of government had an interesting session with all the water managers in the region, and they basically concluded that they were building climate change into their operational plans. Because this has a very significant impact on our citizens, on our local government budget, our ability to perform basic public services, I believe that it's something we can and should vote on. Any other council member wish to make any comments? Okay, there being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll? And this is on TR 13-48.
Correct. Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter? Mayor Brook? Thank you, council.
I'm recusing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. That item passes. Thank you very much. I'll turn the gavel back to his honor.
Thanks, Dave. And just on that resolution, again, nothing should bear my name going to the federal government on that one or any other matter. All right, we are on to business not on the agenda, which I think is the first time we're actually adding something here, so, that bond council wants. And it's consent for dual representation of the City of Falls Church and the Virginia Resource Authority. And I'm going to need a motion, so, because I can't do it.
Yeah, Madam...
Here we go.
Oh, there you see. See?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council consent to dual representation of both the City of Falls Church and the Virginia Resources Authority with respect to certain of the city bonds that are the subject of the defeasance resolution considered by council tonight.
Can you get a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions and perhaps why, you're going to talk about why this is needed?
Well, I would just...
If we also can get some clarification of who exactly the Virginia Resource Authority is.
I would just note that we are provided with bond counsel by Maguire Woods. They do an excellent job for the city. They also are the bond counsel for the Virginia Resources Authority, and that is why there needs to be the dual representation. Any further details, Mr. Taves?
If you can let us know what the Virginia Resource Authority is.
Oh, I'm sorry. The Virginia Resources Authority is the state bonding agency which allows local governments to access the state's AAA bond rating to issue debt. And we've done that in the past for some sewer debt and for some water debt in particular when it's been advantageous to do so.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask our acting city attorney, Mr. Taves, do you see any negative impact on the city as a result of allowing this dual representation?
I don't think so, Mr. Snyder. My understanding of the effect ultimately of this is that if, in the unlikely event down the road, there were litigation, there was litigation between the city and the Virginia Resources Authority, that would mean that Maguire Woods would be conflicted out because they've represented both parties in this matter, and therefore, they just wouldn't be involved in the litigation. Because there's a, you know, a vague potential conflict of interest, they need this permission from both parties, both the VRA and the city, in order to be able to go forward. That's as I understand it. If bond counsel has anything in additional, I'm sure he can add that.
I don't have anything to add, Mr. Taves, but I'm certainly available to answer any questions that council will have.
Just to follow up on that, so you're also going to be seeking the same authorization from the Virginia Resource Authority as well?
Yes, in fact, Mr. Mayor, VRA has our consent to dual...
Similar language, I take it? Okay. Thank you.
And just to follow up, if a disagreement were to occur, we'd be advised of that, and then you'd be, you'd need to remove yourself from representation. Is that right?
Correct. We would withdraw from both representations.
Okay, so you lose two clients at one time, then? Yeah. Okay. All right. The big thing is that we're clear that this is fine to proceed, to process things, but in the case of a disagreement, then we'd be able to seek other counsel.
Yes. I don't think there's any negative impact ultimately on the city from this.
Okay, thank you. Ira?
Actually, having read some of the bond covenants that we get from the VRA, we have no room to move at all. Those things are so tightly written in favor of the VRA that there's really not much we can do. I can't imagine how we'd be able to sue.
Anything further on this? And we had a...
Yeah, just clarify the motion. The motion by Mr. Snyder was to move, move to, is it move for consent to or move to?
I can give you a copy. I move that the city council consent to dual representation.
Of both the City of Falls Church and the Virginia Resource Authority by Maguire Woods. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, I'll take that one.
With respect to certain of the city bonds that are the subject of the defeasance resolution considered by council tonight.
I'll get that from you when we're done.
Great, thanks.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
That was Ms. Berry on the second. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment. Counsel, anything further? Kathy, if you'd call the roll?
I'll be happy to. Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
And Mayor Brook, are you, can you bid on this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mayor Brook.
I don't see why not.
Okay. Mayor Brook?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Shields and Mr. Taves, on the water defeasements, I didn't see any federal issues at all on that, so, yeah. And council's shaking their heads no, so there are no issues. Okay. All right, we are on to council member comments.
Two court comments, Mr. Mayor. One, I want to thank the volunteers and the city staff for the Civil War event on Thanksgiving weekend, and also express my appreciation to the city employees for the work they're doing to keep our streets clear and to provide for the safety of our community.
Thank you. Other council members?
Mr. Mayor, I understand that the library board has voted a second and, I think, final time about the recommendation they're going to make for the facility and the CIP and the planning commission is to consider that next Monday. I know we usually get notifications of the planning commission's meetings packets being posted. Just want to make sure this one in particular is noticed to us so we remember and maybe can take a look at that and get a jump on that issue heading into next year. Two other things, performing my warm body function, which is somewhat, argue, my highest and best use. I went to, I went to, I went to Alexandria Saturday morning to the NVTC and performed some highly valuable jurisdictional quota function, which Cindy Mester can explain to you, which enabled me to receive a standing ovation, which was highly rare, something to do with funding that needed to happen, and we were able to buy a million dollars worth more of rail cars. Anyway, Falls Church was well and widely hailed, and the rest of the discussion was very interesting and full of acronyms and initials and underscored to me why it's so very important that Vice Mayor Snyder continued to participate in those meetings, because hardly anybody else, even the hired consultant they had in there, could keep track of why the NVTA doesn't get along with NVTC over the DRPT because of the TSDAQ and so forth and so on. And my other warm body function, it was my pleasure to attend the Employees' Service Award luncheon last week at the Italian Cafe. It was a really lovely event and astounding years of service piled up by some of our employees, forty, thirty-five, thirty years. Bittersweet moment a bit for the Public Utilities folks who are going over to Fairfax Water, but several of them were well and warmly applauded. And finally, our own city manager, Wyatt Shields, was given his ten-year service award, and I was privileged to speak on behalf of council. I hope that everybody is okay with what I said. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
He said nice things, so there might actually be some objections, but Mr. Duncan, thank you very much.
All right. Other council members? All right.
Just one more quick thing, Mr. Mayor. We heard a presentation from a citizen on Grove Street regarding the West End, and I assume we'll take those comments seriously under consideration as we move forward with the West End project. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, just two very quick things. Given that the Harris Teeter project's mentioned, as I do as a prudential issue only, now that there's a conflict, have given a disclosure to Kathy to keep on file. And then, just to alert the public, whoever's still listening is, and Wyatt may expand on this a little bit, the city is under severe storm watch warning.
Really?
So, please, please be careful out there. Wyatt, I don't know if you want to comment on that, but if you can, I think it would be good to let the public know that there is a storm coming and people should be prepared.
Yeah, I think the kids will be very happy to hear. We are in the sweet spot for a band of snow that will come through tomorrow, starting around 6:00 a.m. and through noon. Current forecast is two to four, AccuWeather says, National Weather Service says three to five. Then it gets real cold, and so this snow's going to stick with us through the week. There's not a forecast to get anywhere significantly above 32 degrees all the way until Friday. But we'll be out treating the streets. I believe the city hall and government offices will be open, and announcements on schools will be at 5:00 a.m.
And given that we may experience some power outages, I believe Dominion has sent out a note. I sent it to city staff just a few minutes ago. If city staff has that available, can you just repeat the numbers so the public has got it and that council members have it? I've asked, I sent it to Kathy to be distributed, just in case constituents call. Really important that individuals call Dominion if they are experiencing power outages. Don't assume your neighbors are taking care of it for you.
It's very important, both for not assuming the neighbors you have called in, but the quantity helps them prioritize where to respond. And this information is also on the city's website, but it's 1-866-366-4357. Or an easy way to remember, it is 1-866-DOM-Help, D-O-M-E-H-E-L-P, DOM for Dominion, DOM Help.
Thank you. And just on one point I would ask is, given that we've had an event so far, we've had some outages, and we may have some tomorrow, if we can just have a follow-up report about how Dominion's handling the city issues. I think we had some constructive meetings, both between Vice Mayor Snyder and I and Dominion officials, and then that was followed up by staff to staff as well. So, if we can just kind of have an action after action report of how that's going, given that this is the next major event that I think we're going to have or have had since those conversations.
Certainly can do that, and I would report that today has gone smoothly as they responded to the outage on West Street, the Flower Building where engineering is, and two of our traffic signals that were out and have been on generator.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Snyder and then Dave Tarter.
And very quickly, will the city be prepared to open the community center as a shelter if needed?
We have just renewed our MOU with the Red Cross for standing up a shelter. That is something that we can do. It's something that we do only very advisably if there's, you know, a real need for it, but we have that MOU in place.
Dave, you good? All right.
On a lighter note, you two gentlemen won't mention it, the Legal Women Voters Holiday Party was postponed from last Sunday, and hopefully, weather permitting, will be held this coming Sunday at 4:00.
Four to...
Sorry, 6:00. At 6:00.
At the church, at Falls Church?
Yep.
An event not to be missed.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Phil, for that. All right, anything further? Okay, if I can get a motion to adjourn, please?
Oh.
You had to do, you had to do it.
That is Mr. Kalin, if I can get a second?
Ms. Berry would be delighted to do it.
Ms. Berry on the second. I'll favor. Say aye.